Okay, thanks everyone for joining us. We're going to start with our next agency, which is the City Administrator's Office. Of course, we are joined by our Council President, Zeke Cohen, as well as, thank you, as well as members of the committee, Vice President Sharon Green Middleton, Councilman Paris Gray. And also in attendance, we have Councilman Mark Parker, Councilman Mark Conway, Councilwoman Felicia Porter, Councilman Zach Blanchard, Councilman Jermaine Jones, and Councilwoman Odette Ramos. And my name is Danielle McCray, because I didn't introduce myself. But I do represent the 2nd District. I'm the Councilwoman for the 2nd District, as well as the Chairperson for this committee. We're going to start with a presentation from our CAO at this time.
Thank you so much. Good afternoon, Chairwoman McCray, Council President Cohen, members of the Ways and Means Committee, council members and council staff. For the record, I am Faith P. Leach, and I have the honor and privilege of serving the residents of the City of Baltimore as the City Administrator. I am proud to appear before you today to discuss Mayor Scott's FY26 recommended budget. I want to start, as I usually do, with a thank you to the more than 13,000 public servants that work for the City of Baltimore. Public servants like Donald Comagies, who, at 95 years old, Mr. Donald has spent 56 years working for the Department of Public Works. Mr. Donald shows up every single day because he loves his coworkers. He loves his hometown, but most importantly, because he found his calling in public service. From Mr. Donald to Damian Taylor, to Toya White, and our Liddensky Employee of the Year, Carol Young, our workforce embodies the best in all of us. They are the best of Baltimore. Our employees aren't just numbers reflecting position counts. They are paramedics, they are mechanics, police officers, and CDL drivers that we need to keep our city going. So to each of you, thank you. This afternoon, my presentation will provide an overview of the FY2026 budget and the steps taken to close a more than $85 million budget gap. The presentation will discuss the current fiscal climate and the impact of the global economic uncertainty on the City of Baltimore. I will discuss the Mayor's Office budget and the administration's investments across the Mayor's five pillars. And I will provide an update on the City Administrator's Office and our efforts to quicken the pace of transformation and innovation. The Mayor's FY26 budget successfully closed an $85 million budget gap through citywide cost optimization and targeted revenue enhancements. For every dollar of revenue raised in this proposal, we identified $2 of savings and cuts. Key components of the FY26 budget include $26.6 million in new revenue generation through proposals aimed at modernizing outdated structures and discouraging nuisance behaviors that negatively impact the quality of life. $43.7 million in citywide savings achieved by optimizing costs and aligning the budget with actual spending patterns. $14.7 million in agency-level savings carefully designed to avoid any major service disruptions. This budget does not increase taxes on our residents. This budget does not include broad-based fee increases. The Mayor's budget does not lay off employees or cut core critical services. Instead, Mayor Scott's budget prioritizes investments aligned with the pillars that guide our vision for a better outcome for Baltimore's residents. Mayor Scott's budget prioritizes youth by investing $2.6 million for three newly renovated recreation centers that will come online in fiscal year 2026. That's Chick Webb, Parkview, and Gardenville. It builds public safety by providing increased funding for proactive solutions to reduce crime, including funding for the group violence reduction strategy, which has contributed to a 23% drop in homicides year-to-date. It supports clean and healthy communities by investing an additional $6 million for shelter operations and another $20 million for the acquisition of men's and women's overflow shelters. The budget continues the Scott administration's efforts to stabilize our routine services in DPW by creating additional solid waste crews to shorten route size and continue our efforts to stabilize our core routine services. It also advances our efforts to be responsible stewards of city resources by creating permanent positions to reduce the use of external contracts to support administrative functions. This is estimated to save us about $1.5 million, starting in fiscal year 2026. And one of the most critical investments in this budget is the $20 million set aside for wage increases for the city's lowest-wage workers through implementation of a modernized wage scale and cost-of-living adjustments. Council members, the FY26 budget was developed during an unprecedented moment in our country's history. The cuts we're seeing at the state and federal level threaten our city's ability to continue investments in core city services, maintain our historic progress in level of investment in public safety. These potential cuts will shake our ability to provide direct human services. In short, these potential budget cuts are a threat to our core values. They threaten our ability to show up for our most vulnerable residents. It will take partnership and decisive leadership to make tough decisions when our fiscal stability and values are under attack. Within the first 100 days of this administration, we have seen threats to our city's federal grants, threats to Medicaid, new costly tariffs, the loss of thousands of federal jobs, and our immigrant neighbors face threats to their livelihoods as they live in uncertainty daily. Last week, we got a glimpse into the president's proposed skinny budget, which outlines decreases or outright eliminates programs like the Community Development Block Grant Program, the Home Program, Low-Income Home Energy Assistance Program, Substance Use and Prevention Programs, unobligated funds from the Infrastructure Investment and Jobs Act related to energy-related initiatives, the budget cuts Medicaid, the EPA, Housing and Community Development, Health and Human Services, and other critical agencies. During this time, we must lean into strong fiscal stewardship and prioritize support for our most vulnerable residents, our older adults, our immigrants, low-income residents, and our young people. We are not alone in facing threats to our fiscal stability. The state continues to face fiscal challenges deepened by the loss of federal jobs, grants, and more. This year's session resulted in additional costs of $16.6 million to the city, including $2.8 million for cost-sharing with the State Department of Assessment and Taxation, and $13.8 million for the teacher pension grant program, which requires a new contribution to the state pension system for teacher and pension costs. This is on top of the more than $129 million in additional costs related to implementation of the Blueprint for Maryland's Future that we absorbed over the past three fiscal years. Additionally, our interest earnings are projected to decline by $17.2 million, or 41%, in fiscal year 2025, as returns on short-term investments decrease due to market volatility. We're also preparing for increased costs on materials and systems used in vertical construction due to tariffs on China, Mexico, and other countries. Specifically, we anticipate increases in steel or metal materials, lumber, nails, sheet metal, vehicles, chemical pumps, and specialized equipment. The Department of Procurement has already issued guidance to city agencies on how tariffs will affect procurement and invoicing. The Scott administration is taking decisive action to address these threats head-on. Our law department has filed or drawn multiple lawsuits against the federal government, including the Diversity, Equity, Inclusion, and Accessibility case, the Reduction in Force case, the Energy Order case, and others. Additionally, we are seeing the impact from federal job losses. Baltimore is home to 12,000 federal jobs, based right here in Baltimore City. Estimates of lost revenue do not capture city residents who commute outside of the city for their federal job. Fiscal year 2026 income tax projections are down by 5.9% compared to the preliminary budget recommendations, based on updated growth assumptions from the state. Now, I want to pivot to talk about the Mayor's Office budget for 2026. The Mayor's Office provides citywide executive leadership through the City Administrator, the Chief of Staff, the Deputy Mayors, and management of multiple mayoral offices, including the Mayor's Office of Older Adult Affairs, the Mayor's Office of Immigrant Affairs, the Mayor's Office of LGBTQ Affairs, African-American male engagement, and the Office of Performance and Innovation. The FY26 budget breaks out mayoral offices embedded in the mayorality to standalone services within the Mayor's Office budget. This change allows for enhanced performance reporting in the budget and streamlines budget management and post-adoption. The Mayor's Office and the 18 mayoral offices embedded within the Mayor's Office budget have a total combined budget of $21 million and 118 FTEs. The Mayor's budget includes $3.5 million allocated from the Opioid Restitution Fund for the Mayor's Office of Overdose Response, $2.2 million to establish the Mayor's Office of Arts, Culture, and Entertainment. Funds for this service were transferred from special events citywide to create the new office. This budget also reallocates an existing position to serve as the city's permit czar overseeing the Be More Fast Initiative. It reallocates an existing position to serve as the Deputy Mayor for Operation and allocates $500,000 to sustain youth-related programming. This slide is just a reminder of the city's organizational structure. The Mayor provides leadership and direction of the city government, and I support and provide day-to-day management of government agencies. Now, I want to talk about the Office of the City Administrator. A recent report on city innovation by Bloomberg Philanthropies asserts, "Cities are uniquely positioned to innovate, but are not always organized to support innovation. A tension exists between putting out fires while managing day-to-day responsibilities and finding the time and space needed to think, plan, and launch solutions." In late February, I announced a plan to restructure the City Administrator's Office to accelerate the pace of the Scott administration's efforts to reform city government, improve agency operations, and deliver on high-quality services. While my first year as City Administrator was marked by stability and progress, including the return of weekly recycling, implementation of procurement reform, launch of Downtown Rise, establishment of city service sprints, implementation of 24-hour parking enforcement, introduction of the Tiger Team Agile Methodology to solve problems like Closed Means Closed and 3-1-1, and record reductions in squeegee activity and homicides, much of my time was spent stabilizing core services and putting out fires, with little space to think, plan, and innovate. In FY26, that changes. The next phase and the maturation and the restructuring of our organization involves moving beyond putting out fires to executing on a long-term strategic vision marked by incremental improvements to agency delivery chains, achieved by reviewing and updating staffing models, aggressively pursuing industry standards across all of our core services, leveraging civic design to redesign core services and centralize internal services to better support agency operations, and strengthening our internal and external-facing performance management infrastructure so city leaders and residents can better track our progress. We'll also be focused on compliance, improved grants management, and implementation of corrective actions. To achieve this vision, I have added compliance, performance management, analytics, and operational management capacity to the City Administrator's Office to quicken the pace of reform. Specifically, I promoted a new Deputy City Administrator focused on internal services, performance and innovation, audits, grants management, and compliance in high-priority strategic initiatives. I created a new Deputy Mayor of Operations to focus on core government functions, including the Department of Public Works, Department of Transportation, and the Department of General Services. Additionally, we have restructured our Office of Performance and Innovation and added civic design capacity. This team leads our delivery unit and tiger teams. They bring together designers, analysts, and technologists to translate insights from City Stat into action by re-divining workflows, removing barriers, and rebuilding services around resident and frontline workers' needs. They're taking on some of the city's most complex operational challenges and making significant improvements in defined timeframes. The civic design team tackled the Closed Means Closed challenge in 3-1-1 and is now set to take on critical city systems, including Acela, the city's new permitting software, Workday, and they are proactively supporting the implementation of our new tax system. All right. During my hearing in FY24, and I actually stole a page from my hearing last year, Council President Cohen, you said that if there was one impactful thing I could do in my role as CEO, CAO, it would be to fix the Closed Means Closed issue within 3-1-1. Well, I'm here to proudly report that we have done it. Closed means closed. Over the past six months, we have made significant improvements to 3-1-1, addressing nuisance issues that inaccurately closed tickets when the work was not completed. We've expanded communications to our residents and addressed inaccurate duplicate tickets. These efforts, led by our Office of Performance and Innovation and BSIT, have significantly reduced Closed Means Closed errors in 3-1-1. Now, with a dedicated civic design team embedded in OPI, we are expanding our capacity to leverage tiger teams of technologists and civic designers to analyze core services and systems and quicken the pace of government reforms efforts. I'm going to start to move quickly through these slides, but this slide just outlines our performance planning and monitoring process. Under the direction of the new Deputy City Administrator and co-led by OPI and BBMR, efforts are underway to develop a citywide plan to anchor agency performance and related metrics through goal-setting, measurement, action, and learning. This is an example of the transformation lifecycle that guides our work. It starts with deep learning and problem identification, moves to capacity building, and bringing in transformation-minded talent. It then moves into strategy development, then execution at scale, and sustainability and continuous improvement. To date, we have implemented this cycle on a programmatic level. We're now moving to implement the transformation cycle enterprise-wide to hasten the pace of progress. I want to end my presentation by providing an update on the 10-year financial plan. We are leveraging the 10-year plan to not only create a path to structural balance, but invest in a growth agenda for our city. The three cornerstones of the 10-year financial plan are tax competitiveness, core service delivery, and infrastructure investment. Under our tax competitiveness cornerstone, you will see initiatives that provide sustained property tax relief for residents, provide protections to protect vulnerable homeowners, and broaden the city's tax base. Under core service delivery, you will see investments that make additional investments in employee compensation, ensuring competitive wages, continues investments to improve service levels for city services through investments in technology and process improvement. And through infrastructure development, you will see work to grow the city's local bond, local capital contribution, address the more than $2 billion in deferred maintenance, sustain our increase to the annual GEO borrowing, right-size our city facilities, and invest in a new and modern convention center. The draft of the 10-year plan is complete, but given the fiscal headwinds from the federal government, we decided to expand the plan to capture the impacts of federal cuts and layoffs. The city is currently soliciting feedback from key stakeholders, and the plan is expected to be final by fall 2025 and will incorporate any known changes to federal grants. Council members, what you have before you is a responsibly balanced budget developed against the backdrop of uncertainty. What you have is a budget that responsibly bets on our city's growth with investments in permitting reform and refame Baltimore, the Mayor's bold vacant housing strategy anchored by our first-of-its-kind non-contiguous TIF. What you have is a budget that doubles down on stabilizing core service with the addition of new DPW crews dramatically increases the number of lane miles to be resurfaced this paving season from 20 to more than 100, and continues our aggressive modernization of the city's fleet through investments in our master lease. Council members, we have made so much progress in the last two years that I have been in this role, and yet we are at a critical juncture in the maturation of our organization. We are faced with two choices. We can start lowering our standards by doing things like declaring industry standards are unachievable and slash budgets, or we can anchor ourselves even deeper into the kind of leadership that pursues solutions and interventions that are bold, yet achievable, and yes, pragmatic and innovative. We will lean into industry standards and best practices like staffing studies and bringing rigor and nuance into our work to reform government operations. We will lean into the type of leadership that is intentional, not haphazard and rushed, leadership that is driven by our belief in what our city government will be, a model for equity, high-quality service delivery, and transformation. With that, I am happy to take any questions.
Thank you, Madam CAO. Colleagues, for this round, we're going to do two questions. You will have two follow-ups with your questions. If you have a comment or concern, that may be a little, hey, Long, I may nudge you to get to your question, just giving everybody a heads up. We're going to start with Council President Cohen.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, City Minister Leach, for your service and your partnership. I wanted to talk about service delivery, and specifically, the folks who deliver services for Baltimoreans are workers. I appreciate you always, in your introductory speech, lifting up the women and men that make this city move. One of the unfortunate trends we've had over the last couple of years is a lot of injury and death in some of our city agencies. I know that this has been a focus for the city council. We've had multiple oversight hearings, particularly in the Department of Public Works and sanitation, but it is a concern heading into what will likely be a very hot summer for all of our agencies that interact outdoors. Can you explain to the council the improvements in health and safety that we are making to make sure our workers are well when they go out and perform the services that we count on?
Thank you so much for that question, Council President Cohen, and also thank you for always acknowledging the fact that we try to lift up our employees at the start of each of the budget seasons. It's a really important question, so I will answer it in two ways. We'll talk directly about heat safety, and then I'm going to talk about our overall oversight as it relates to workplace injuries. So related to heat safety, we are in active negotiations with all of our union partners, and one of the active discussions that we are having are around a citywide heat illness prevention plan. So we've already seen a heat illness prevention plan through the Department of Public Works. They've been a leader in the city on this and have their draft HIP that has already been sent to MoSh, and we are actually using the draft HIP plan that the Department of Public Works has developed as a model for our citywide heat illness prevention plan. So what that means is that we're actively in conversation with our union partners about what they want to see in the heat illness prevention plan, as well as with city agencies. What we have to be mindful of is the impact to operations, right? So a part of the heat illness prevention plan that DPW put forwards, it builds in additional rest breaks, which we know are desperately needed for our workers. And so as we do that, we're monitoring the potential impacts to our operations. We're also planning to partner with the city's health department so that when we reach those Code Red days, that there are cooling centers that all of our employees, as well as our residents, have access to. In those cooling centers, we will be sure to have water, also have electrolytes that are available, additional quick bites for folks to eat while they are on their rest break. So we're going through a process now where we're ensuring that we are strategically having those cooling centers, which we are already mandated to do as a part of Code Red, but we're making sure that those cooling centers are ready to be activated for our employees. So that's on the heat illness prevention side. Separately, we're getting more aggressive about monitoring workplace injuries. So through our Risk Management Department, and actually in partnership with the Office of Performance and Innovation, we have a Workplace Injury Committee. Workplace injury is managed by the Risk Management Department, and it brings together all of the city's agencies, and it reviews actual cases of workplace injury. And we talk through what were the challenges, what drove those injuries, as we look at each of those cases, so that we can better our systems to address the root causes of what is driving some of the workplace injuries that we're seeing, and we can also look at trends to see if there are different interventions that we need to put in place. Additionally, on top of that, we do Workplace Safety Stat. And Workplace Safety Stat is led by the Office of Performance and Innovation, and that brings together, again, all of the agency partners, myself, as well as the deputy mayors, where we talk through just implementation of our workplace safety procedures and policies to ensure that they are actually being followed. We talk through additional policy changes that might be needed, and then we're also talking about any operational challenges that might be resulting in the OPI and the stat model. We actually take a closer look at things like the time that it takes for us to address our facility's issues, for example, our work order system. So we look at the facility's issues that we have. Are there some driving factors to those facility issues, like down HVACs or other issues? How long are we taking to actually close out those requests whenever they come in? Do we have the internal capacity to fix the facility's needs? Or do we have outside contractors that are already on call and available? So that's just a high-level overview of some of the things that we're doing to ensure that we are better monitoring and managing workplace safety for our employees.
I appreciate that. I know that this council has been extremely concerned about the amount of injuries and, unfortunately, deaths that we've seen within city agencies. We did a tour of a shift with sanitation workers led by Councilman Glover to try to understand what they go through every day, and one of the things that I found concerning was, as the trash compactor compacts trash, there is often glass that gets sprayed up. Folks did not have goggles. I'm curious how we are thinking about making sure all of our workers have the right safety material. In the pandemic, it was about PPI, it was about making sure that masks and gloves and all the rest, but just from a worker safety standpoint, how are we making sure that all of our frontline employees have what they need to stay safe?
Thank you for that question, and I think that's an excellent point. We've actually been very much focused on ensuring that our workers have the protective equipment that they need, as well as any other materials that they need to be safe while they are doing the job. One of the things that I noticed, and this was about two years ago, and this is when we were having some pretty acute challenges with our procurement system, I was talking to a number of agencies, and they raised issues around work boots, for example, and some of the challenges that they had getting a contract to get safety boots, right, which should never be an issue in the City of Baltimore. And so from that conversation, what led from that conversation is actually what we've been calling our, it's like a procurement coordination meeting, and we also separately do procurement stat, where we are identifying those high-priority procurements, where there might be a lock jam, where they might be stuck. We're working across our operational agencies, and this is why the Deputy Mayor of Operations role is going to be critical and important, so they can really focus in on those core four agencies, because there's an opportunity to streamline the contracting process. DOT is going to need safety boots, DPW's going to need safety boots. So how can we streamline and have a master contract so that there's no one that is without safety equipment or other things that they need? And so from that initial conversation, we started this procurement work group. We've been able to unjam the lock jam around those things. I think the broader point here, and this is the point that I actually made to the agency directors, and I make this to them all the time, we have to move from this deficit mindset and this deficit frame. So many agency directors were operating without. We should never operate without the core, basic things that our employees need to do the job, and we need to raise our hands whenever that is an issue. There should never be a day that someone doesn't have access to safety boots. There should never be a day that someone doesn't have access to water or any other equipment that they need. And if that day occurs, then we will do everything in our power to push through emergencies to make sure that agencies get what they need. And so what I've been seeing more of is agencies saying, "This is an issue. How can we work together to fix it?" And I think the broader systemic issue, because we don't always want to work around broken systems, we got to fix the broken systems. And we've done a pretty decent job with implementing procurement reform, so we're no longer seeing those long lock jams that we were seeing two years ago when I stepped into the role so that we can get some of the basic safety things that our employees need.
I appreciate your point about not being stuck in deficit thinking. I think it's critically important that all of our agency leadership is focused first and foremost on the health and safety of our workers, and I know that is going to be a theme for this council and for the administration as we move forward. I want to shift gears for my second question and just ask specifically about the miscellaneous category, and this may end up going to Director Larson as well, but the miscellaneous category within the mayorality includes $193 million in general fund dollars, and my understanding is that approximately $155 million of it is going to go to Pago Capital for capital improvements. That, to my count, leaves about $38 million in miscellaneous. Can you explain, can you or Director Larson, explain what that $38 million is going toward?
So I just want to correct a couple of the numbers. So in the fiscal '26 budget, it includes $238.9 million in miscellaneous general, $194.6 million in... 194.6 million is being, reflects the pay-as-you-go capital contributions. And just to note, that includes the general fund contribution, the highway user revenue contribution, as well as the contribution from the stormwater, wastewater, and water utilities. The remaining appropriations total $44.4 million, and these reflect a combination of citywide expenditures that don't have a clear home within a specific city or within a specific city agency, or the intent of the dollars ends up supporting multiple agencies.
Could you just help me with that last part? Again, sort of, can you help me understand? You mentioned don't have a home within specific city agencies. This is...
So for example, you know, we make payments to the Maryland Stadium Authority and ESTAT. Those don't have a clear home within any city agency. And so our annual contribution that is dictated by state funding levels lives in this agency.
So there's about $44 million remaining for activities without a home?
That would either, that don't have a clear home within a city agency, or that support multiple agencies.
Okay. And so I heard ESTAT as one example. Could you just provide a few examples?
Another one is related to the brownfields tax credit. So when a property gets a brownfield credit, we actually have to make a contribution to the state fund. So the miscellaneous general appropriations include $3.3 million as the city's contribution to the state brownfields fund. We make an annual contribution to the city's rainy day fund. That annual contribution ensures that that fund is growing at the same pace as the general fund budget, in our goal to achieve an 8% funding level for the rainy day fund. That appropriation lives here. We allocate funding for auditor, independent auditor, auditors who are responsible for auditing the financial statements at the end of the year. That appropriation lives here. There are citywide memberships for things like Mako or the League of Cities that are utilized by the city council, by the comptroller, by the mayor's office. Those citywide membership fees live in this category. There are costs associated with various special events. This is where overtime costs from police, fire, transportation, public works, wrecking parks, to support those special events, those appropriations would live here. Things like legal fees. So when our law department needs to coordinate with outside counsel to bring them in to support any sort of litigation or cases associated with work that might span multiple agencies, those legal fees live here. So those are a number of the main examples of what would be included.
I appreciate that. I'm just going to make a committee request before yielding back to the chair. To the extent possible, and I see some of them, but would love to see just itemized list, dollar values, et cetera, for all those.
So all of that lives in the budget document in terms of all of the activities that are funded here. The agency detail also includes a description of what lives in each one of those categories. And that is, you know, that goes back multiple years. So I'm happy, as a follow-up, to just reference those pages in the agency detail books.
Thanks. Just would love further conversation about the items that are, do not have a home within specific city agencies. But thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. We're now going to go to our committee members' questions. We're going to start with Vice President Middleton.
Greetings.
I'm going to, I guess, first I'm going to start off with a comment and then my question. And I guess I want to start off with first, how long have you been with us as the city administrator?
Two years.
Two years. I just want to, first of all, thank you. I don't, you probably don't hear that too often. I am going into my 19th year. Brandon Scott is my fifth mayor, which is really a short timeframe within that amount of time. And for a person to come on, Baltimore is a very, you know, we're a complicated city. And because we have not have longevity in a mayor, it made it even more difficult. And you have come in as a leader. And, you know, a lot of times we talk about the faults of someone that micromanages. But you had to do that, to learn, and that shows the leadership that you have. And now there, within that time, there has started to be turnaround in violence. We're off the list of, you know, one of the most dangerous cities, and we don't, none of us say that enough, but that is a very powerful statement. And then now that we have this new president of the United States that is literally, you know, he's, Baltimore City is a target. And you have laid out a plan of service delivery and really trying to get us through and continue to save this city. And I commend you for all of that. It takes a smart, energized person to give up a lot personally and deal with this city. You have been on community walks personally, probably with all of us, in a sense. You have personally answered emails of just concerns and delegated how to help. And I think we have to commend you for that work within that short of time. And to put together a team to help you is important, too. And, you know, some people in leadership roles get compliant, complacent, and you have given a push to a lot of people. And again, we can't thank you enough for that. So as we're moving forward, I guess one of the questions I want to ask, you know, we've been taken off that list of most dangerous cities, but we still just have this strong service delivery problem with cleanliness, dumping. All of the agencies trying to begin to collaborate with each other, and it's still very difficult. Even though we have somewhat improved a little bit with the 3-1-1 and closed, it's still there. And I guess from a person that does represent an area with lots and lots of residents and less business, you know, it's a very important thing. And so on that note, how are you, you know, we're still considered one of the dirtiest cities, so we trying to work hard to get that cleaned up. I want to also thank, you know, a lot of these agencies have really stepped up the plate that I have seen over the years as well. How are we going to continue that, keep things moving and keep that collaboration going? You have helped create careers and continuing with apprenticeships. Just tell us that a little more detail. I know you've laid outline, but tell us how you're going to continue with what we're getting ready to face.
Yes, absolutely. Thank you so much, and thank you for your compliments. I want to be clear that while we've made some progress, and I would say, and I said in my remarks, that my first year was marked by stability, and you're right. I do personally answer almost every single email, and I do personally go out on those community walks. And where we're moving, and this is why I talk about the maturation of our organization in that transformation lifecycle, that's not sustainable. And so what we need is a sustainable kind of strategic plan and to build a strong team of leaders that are able to manage not just the day-to-day of the government, but to manage the transformation, right? So that's why in the middle of that circle, you saw culture change, because it's not just about the mayor, it's not just about the city administrator. It is about how we shift the mindset, how we shift the thinking, how we shift the culture of this organization. And I think to your point about the fact that we are no longer on the most violent cities list, little things like that, not little, big things, that's a huge thing. When we came into this organization, so although I've been city administrator two years, I was deputy mayor prior to that, so I've been with Mayor Scott since April of 2021, right? So two years as deputy mayor, two years as city administrator. When we came in, I think we were at 332 homicides. Last year, 201 homicides. This year, we're seeing a 23% reduction on top of what we saw last year. And what that does is it starts to shift the narrative of who Baltimore is. And that's what's needed to start to shift the culture of not just the organization, but also the city's culture. Now, to pivot to city services, violence and crime, of course, is always, public safety is going to be and will continue to be a top priority of this administration. But what I said two years ago, and what I am committed to, is that we have got to deliver better services for our residents in the city of Baltimore. We are not where we need to be when it comes to delivering our core services. And so what you will get in this next term, or this next term, but really the next phase of our work, is it's about digging deep into our service delivery models. We got to start to look at the staffing structures within our agencies. Are we appropriately staffed to be able to deliver the services? Are there industry standards that we need to be meeting? Last year, we talked a lot about DPW, and we talked about recycling and solid waste. As I started to dig into the issues within solid waste, what I saw is, we weren't having a recycling issue, there were, we needed to stabilize an entire portion of our government, right? We did not have updated staffing models. We did not have optimized routes. We also didn't have the right software inside of our vehicles. We didn't have enough vehicles to provide the service, right? We didn't have enough street sweepers to provide the daily minimum of our, to actually do our street sweeping operation. We didn't have the number of load packers to be able to do recycling as well as trash pickup, right? And so again, it's getting back to the basis. It's working with our city stat and our OPI team to start to map those things out, so that when we are building a budget, we are building a budget like we're doing this year that adds to the number of solid waste crews, because we did not have enough crews to actually do the service. We couldn't meet industry standards. Industry standards tell us that we should have less than, I think it's 900 stops, right? We were at like 1,400 stops when it came to solid waste. But we did a study. The study told us what we needed to do, and we've been driving towards implementing that. And so to just close out that question, that's the type of work that we need to do at scale. I talked about how we've done this at a one-off. We've done it to bring back weekly recycling. We've done it to stabilize procurement. But we need to do it in transportation. We need to do it in other parts of our government, and we need to be able to do this work at scale. And to do that, you know, we bought on the civic design team, I'm restructuring and reorganizing government, and then I'm building out this deputy mayor that's focused specifically on our operations agencies.
Thank you for, thank you for your answer. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Vice President. Councilmember Gray.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And I just want to express the same sentiments. I thank you for all the work you've done. It is, is a relief to go into meetings and have conversations about illegal dumping and other issues and hear that someone's on board, but not only on board, but has a plan to do something about it. So just thank you as well. I have a couple of questions. The first is about multi-agency communication, which is really important about addressing critical situations across our city. Can you share a little bit about how or what triggers a multi-agency response, and what does that process look like? I bring this up because there were a few instances in my district where the multi-agency communication tragedy wasn't utilized. One was the sexual assault in Lincoln Park, where Cary Mary Nature School was never notified about the lockdown. And there was an active manhunt in the immediate area of the school. So like, in those instances, we know that we, the intent is to make sure that everyone knows. But how are we ensuring that that happens?
Yep, thank you so much. So I'm going to start, and then I actually want to use the opportunity to highlight some of the incredible folks that work in the mayor's office and specifically on my team. So I asked Allen to follow up with the response around the multi-agency task force work that he leads. But your specific question was around what was a public safety incident. And so when it comes to multi-agency communications relative to emergency management or public safety issues, there are protocols that we put in place. And depending on the size of the issue, we might implement our incident response, where there's an incident commander who is responsible for coordinating all the agencies that should be responding. And so it sounds like in that case or in that instance, without going into much detail, that there was a portion that was missed, where maybe we didn't notify outside stakeholders about what was taking place. But there is a response protocol and a coordination protocol when it comes to public safety and emergency management. And then separately, when it comes to multi-agency communication, as well as just coordinating between agencies to resolve kind of longstanding issues that might come from our constituents, that's where the work of Allen Robinson and the multi-agency task force comes into place. So I'm going to pivot and let Allen talk a little bit more about what that work looks like.
Thank you, Madam CA. Thank you, Councilman Gray. So when we talk about the multi-agency inspection task force, you were talking about how do we actually coordinate some city services? And we do focus around public safety and public environmental concerns, right? And so what we're doing is we're bringing all of the folks who actually address and provide front-facing services. So we're talking about our DPWs, our DOT, our DHCD from the inspections Task Force, I mean, our inspection side of things. We also bring in our wrecking parks folks to talk about what they can do to support. But more importantly, not just the environmental cleaning aspect or investigation, we also bring in folks to talk about human services and how we can support through homeless services, through our MONZI engagement, through our Office of African-American Male Engagement, so that not only are we coming out and cleaning up what we see, but we're trying to figure out how do we address the root cause of that through engagement and actual community outreach. So we're knocking on doors, we're knocking on businesses, we're saying, hey, what's going on? We want to have a better understanding of how we can help support. This is done in conjunction with BPD, who have been extremely cooperative and supportive in helping us understand what some of their challenges are, so that we can make sure we are putting the right resources to task to support the communities as at large. We also reached out to all of the council members to ask you guys specifically, what are some areas that you would like to see us address and incorporate into this? Now, this is a weekly engagement that we have every Thursday morning. We actually get together as a collaborative, a group, to kind of talk about some of the challenges that we're seeing, some of the concerns that we have out there, and to kind of debrief on the week's activities, to figure out how we can next pivot to help the communities that we serve.
And my apologies if you answer this, but how is it triggered? Like, you know, what, after the event, how do you trigger the response for the all agencies hands-on? Is it like an email, or like, how does that, how does that work?
So if we're talking specifically about our community engagement aspect, we do utilize the statistical analysis done by the BPD, as well as we'll use data from OPI to help support the trends that are going on in the footprint. Now, we do, we are able to pivot when there is an actual emergency or a, something that may have happened in the community recently, and we then try to coordinate to figure out how we can help stabilize by doing these services, but working in coordination with those folks from MONZI, who actually do the stabilization, the mayor's office of community affairs, and they're out there also doing stabilization activities. So it is done through conversations and is done through emails. But what helps trigger that is us doing some statistical analysis on the front end to determine some of the trends that are happening. And then also, when we receive requests from our council members, we help to support some of the concerns that they may have. of the concerns that they may have identified in their communities as well.
Uh, thank you. And this is another one focused on multi-agency, like projects or plans. So when districts have multi-agency projects or plans to develop or implement, how's the office, this is for you, CAO Leach, how's the office in coordination of these projects? And how are we making sure that these agencies are actively working on larger projects? An example, we've shared this with you already, is the flashing floodlights along Frederick Avenue, right? And so we've had these discussions before, but I just wanted to just know, how are you guys working alongside these agencies to ensure that these projects are being sought through, but also like they're done in a, in an efficient, an efficient time?
Yep, thank you so much for that. And thank you for that, using that specific example. So this is actually an area where I wanna, where I want us to improve. I want us to be able to improve on our project management and our follow-up and follow-through as well as engagement with the council. And being able to implement kind of internal tracking mechanisms that we can report out and share regularly where we are with our progress. So I want to acknowledge that that is an area of improvement. But as you raise these issues, to me, I generally identify a member of my team or one of the deputy mayor's teams that's responsible for working with you and/or the community to, to, to identify how to implement whatever the issue is, or not even implement the issue, but address whatever the challenge is and implement whatever solutions come up. Now, there are going to be times where there are short-term projects where they're quick fixes, we need DOT to install a sign, but then there are going to be more complicated issues where we actually need to dig deeper into this issue. Is this a floodplain? Do we need to, you know, coordinate between HCD, DOT, and DPW, for example? And so that's gonna require more, I guess, project management and additional follow-up and follow-through. And so that's what I'm building out on my team is the ability to better kind of do that project management, do that critical thinking, do the critical partnering with the agencies. Oftentimes, they get the issue, they want to quickly solve the issue. The issues may not be quickly solvable, they may be very complicated. And so what we, what I want the city administrator's office to be prepared and able to do is to be able to work with agencies to help them identify solutions, right? And not the quick solutions that just get us by, right? Like, we want to actually fix and provide systemic solutions. This is, I would say, my second iteration at trying to do this 3-1-1 reform work. The initial iteration of it, it was a lot of Band-Aids. It was, how do we plug the hole right now because we're getting inundated from, you know, the outside? That is not sustainable. What we gotta commit ourselves to is getting to the root cause, looking at the drivers of some of these issues, and actually working with agencies, not on the quick fix, but on the fix that will fix the issue permanently. And so that's the capacity that, not just on OPI and in the civic design team, but that we are building out on my team. But right now, you send it to me, I'm gonna identify a project manager, which could be me, or Allen, or the deputy city administrator, or one of the deputy mayors, and they would do that coordination with you and community.
Yeah, no, I appreciate that. And I think you partly answered my follow-up, which is gonna be not just the flashing floods, but the entire mitigation plan. I think it would do a great service if we had someone from the CAO's office to oversee and have that project management because it's been, I guess, a couple of days ago, was the seventh year anniversary of the flooding that happened in Irvington, which often gets overlooked because of what happened in Ellicott City, in Old Ellicott City. But since then, they've had tens of, well, hundreds of millions, $250 million in investments in that area, and we've yet to really put any significant financial resources into the Irvington area. And, you know, what we were told was the low-hanging fruit was this flash and sign. And granted, you know, the two things that I'm bringing up, both were before your time, so I am happy that you are here to see this through, but it just goes to, once again, I think you talked about this, it's really hard for any of our citizens to believe that we can do the big things if we continue to promise the small things and we can't just follow through with them. So I definitely appreciate your answer and look forward to working with you in the future on getting, on getting both of those things done.
Thank you so much.
CAO Leach, where are you at in the process of filling a position for Deputy Mayor for Operations?
Yep, so in this budget, we actually reallocate a pin within the mayor's office to bring on a deputy mayor for operations. So I'll be doing the recruitment and bringing on a new deputy mayor in early next year, so July.
I'm, I'm sorry, I apologize. You said early next year?
Yeah, early next fiscal year, so July, uh, July after the budget passes. Thank you.
We're gonna go to Councilwoman Glover.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just to kind of piggyback on some of the sentiments that were held by my colleagues on the great work that you're doing, you know, for the last two years, and me myself, being a city employee roughly for around, probably close to 26 years now, from, you know, DPW to the State Attorney's Office, now under council. I've really seen a change in, in the administration. So, you know, I say to the voters, thank you for passing that on the ballot to hire a CAO, because I think this is where the change kind of started. This is what I see that's different. I am curious to know about when are we expecting to see the raises of DPW? You know, that's really nearing the end of my heart. And, you know, what's the expectations of, you know, that moving forward?
Yeah, absolutely, thank you so much. So in my opening remarks, I talked about the, the money and the funding that we set aside in this year's budget to implement the salary study, which would modernize the city's wage structure and implement a 20-step scale. And so I'm proud to say that we have prioritized implementation of that scale for our lowest pay, our lowest wage workers. And so we are in active negotiations with the, with our union partners about that scale. And so once we come to agreement with our union partners, then we look forward to implementing what we think is a more equitable and much more aggressive wage schedule, schedule and salary scale for our employees and including our DPW solid waste workers.
Do you have like a gestational idea maybe with the percentages, like for those, you know, employees?
It'll be significant. I can't, I can't speak to it just because we're in active negotiations.
All right, okay, cool. So moving forward, just to piggyback a little bit off what the president said earlier on, we, I did challenge some of my colleagues to go out and we rolled them back in those trucks, we did a route. Seen some of them leaping down to their foots because they know the labor that, that it takes in order to get those jobs done. But I do know that the mayor, he said it many a times, how, you know, this is one of his priorities, and I have seen how he's put his foot down on those agencies, and I know that the mayor isn't inside those offices. But I'm saying, you know, to those directors, you know, how do we push them, you know, to push the mayor's focus and his agenda forward? Because when we went out on those routes, although we did a lot of the studies and things of the nature, we still seen at times where some of the workers did not have the proper equipment, you know, out there on those routes. The trash was coming out of those compacters, gloves, things of that nature, and some of the workers are saying that it is hard for them at times to get gloves. And it was hard back then at times when I was working there as well. So I'm saying like, in this time, like, it shouldn't be, you know, hard for safety measures for us to access those tools. So what can you do to kind of, you know, just push those directors to ask those, you know, members or leaders that's controlling those yards now moving forward to make sure that we have those safety equipments for those men and women that are out there doing the jobs?
Yep, thank you so much for that question. I think it is some multi-pronged answer and a multi-pronged response, and it builds off of what members of this body did. As agency leaders and as, you know, the city administrator and the mayor, we've got to, we have to be present in the field, right? It is not good enough to manage an agency from our office, especially if it's one of our core operational business units. We need agency directors that know what our frontline staff are dealing with as they are out there doing the job every single day. And that's how you can know what is happening in the field is because, and whether or not folks have safety goggles and gloves, is because you see it, because you show up. And, you know, that's kind of a, a first level of response. I'm not saying that that is the silver bullet to solve the issue. I think what it requires though is not just, it requires leadership at the agency director level, but it also requires systems throughout that agency. There are multiple checks and balances within an agency. There should never be a day, as, you know, as I said earlier, where, you know, I'm the city administrator and I'm finding out that there is not, that an employee doesn't have safety goggles or gloves. That director, there should be multiple checks and balances at the manager level, the supervisor level, right? We should be able to catch those things. This goes back to a conversation this body has had though, and that I talked a little bit about with the culture change, where people are used to operating without their safety equipment and gloves, and if I raise this issue, it's not gonna get addressed, so I'm just not gonna raise it. And so that's where we gotta start to shift the mindset, we gotta shift the culture, and that comes with training, that comes with holding people accountable, that shows, that comes with showing up and being in places where they're not used to seeing leaders be by being out on the field. And it comes with pushing through to make sure that our systems, like our procurement system, are nimble enough to be able to procure and get the things that we need for our employees.
All right, thank you, thank you so much. And again, you know, continue to keep up the great work that you guys are doing. Thanks for just having that line of communication with all the agencies that when we reach out, I know when I reach out, you guys answer. And it's at times, you know, you personally reach out to me and said, you know, Councilman, do you have anything for me? And I say, you know what, the agency's doing their job. So again, appreciate everything that you guys are doing, so kudos to you guys.
Thank you, Councilwoman Glover. Councilwoman Schleifer?
Thank you, Madam Chair. CAO, you mentioned in your response to the VP about solid waste and the improvements being made there, and the head of DPW has been doing a great job at implementing a lot of the changes that we need over there. One of the, the critical items that we've heard about, and I have been one of the council members leading the charge fighting for these, for the solid waste workers and DPW workers for many years, one thing that we hear a lot is about the instability in leadership and people not being in, you know, permanent roles, serving in acting capacities for extended periods of time. And that leads to a lot of instability if you don't know who your, who your boss is and you don't know if your boss is gonna be there tomorrow, or if they're gonna be there in a permanent capacity. And so do you believe that, that people, and in this, in this case, we've seen, I think, that the bureau head has been in acting capacity for a few years?
Yes.
Do you believe that people should be able to serve in an acting capacity for, for years as opposed to getting a permanent offer from, you know, the agency?
So I'll talk about the facts of what's happening at solid waste. So the current bureau head is in interim capacity. We did have a permanent bureau head that I believe came before the council. I think that the bureau head has to be confirmed. So we had a bureau head that existed within the agency that was confirmed by the council for, I think, a year. Prior to that bureau head coming in, I think the current bureau head, who is interim, was interim for a year or, yeah, I think about a year, a year and maybe a year and a half. So there was about a year, a year and a half period where we had an interim. We came in, we got a permanent for another year, and then now we're, now we have a bureau head that is in interim again. And so it wasn't a contiguous three and a half or four years of not having a bureau head at solid waste. But I would offer that that bureau head has been with the department and been with the city for 27 years. And so I think what we are seeing now in DPW is we are actually stabilizing the leadership in DPW. When you look at the bureau heads, when you look at the leadership team in DPW, they are individuals that have been with the agency, you know, more than a year, some of them five, six years, some of them are doing second and third stance at the agency. And so we are starting to see a bit more stability in the leadership ranks of that organization.
So when it comes to the acting capacity versus permanent, I mean, I'm got no problem with, with who, who it is and if somebody's qualified to do it. But again, to the instability, should somebody be able to be in an acting capacity for extended periods of time without getting a permanent offer?
So what I will say is we will, the way that I look at interims across city government, not just at the Department of Public Works, is that when we identify the right candidate for the job, then we will put forward the right candidate, a permanent candidate that we will bring if necessary, depending on the role, to this body so that this body could confirm that candidate. But we're not going to rush recruitment. We're gonna find individuals that espouse our values, that are the transformation-minded individuals that can lead the organization. And when you look at the DPW leadership and the time that it took for us to find Director Zaid, it took us eight months, I think? We did an eight-month process to find Director Zaid. And there were plenty of other candidates that we could have selected throughout that process. But Director Zaid was the right person for the moment that that organization was in, and I am proud that we were able to recruit him. So to just put a more finite response on to your question, no, I don't believe that people should be in acting capacities for years or forever and ever. I think that we should be aggressively searching for the right candidate, but right is the key word. We need to put forward candidates that can do the job that is in front of them, that are transformation-minded, and until we get that right candidate, we could have or will have interims in place.
So then people who are serving in an acting capacity for extended periods of time, then they're, they should just assume that they're not gonna get the permanent nod?
Well, it depends. So oftentimes, there are people who are in acting, or in this case, it would be in interim capacity, because there isn't a director or a division head there. But oftentimes, those individuals, they may not want the job. And so that is why they are continuing to be in an acting capacity. And so it could be a number of factors why, you know, someone is staying in the acting capacity and not moving to a full-time permanent position. So it really depends on the, the position that we're talking about.
So and across the board, I mean, we see this in, in multiple agencies, there's people who are in acting capacities who are doing so because they have no intention to follow the residency requirements of the city. So should, should that be allowed to be a loophole that people who don't want to move into the city are forced to just, can continue to just serve in an acting capacity for really an indefinite amount of time? Or should we just get rid of the residency requirements? Which I, you know, I think there's pros and cons on either way, but if we have those requirements, shouldn't people be forced to follow them?
So I believe that in general, people are following the residency requirement. To your specific question around the loophole of being in an acting capacity, again, as I said, we always want to make sure that we have permanent leadership in place. We don't want interim and people in acting roles for years. We want, you know, as you mentioned, stable leadership in all of our organizations. And so that's what we should be pursuing is stable leadership in the organization and leadership that abides by the requirements, whether they are residency or otherwise.
So then these positions...
Vice Chair Schleifer, I appreciate your line of questioning. We have two follow-ups per question. So we're gonna come back to that on the next line, on the next round. Thank you. Councilwoman Ramos.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair. And thank you, Madam CAO, again, for all that you've done. I think we have been seeing the transformation and want to be a partner in that as well. I have a few questions, but I'm gonna start with, I very much appreciate in your initial remarks, the importance of investing in our most vulnerable residents, and you mentioned the immigrant community specifically. And I'm grateful for that because I think that what we're seeing, the basically terrorizing of our communities, is very scary for our residents. And so I want to just understand a little bit about where, where we're heading in this. The book, the budget book, the executive summary has three pages of what some of the challenges are from the federal level. One of them is an entire page on what might happen with our immigrant community, which I appreciate the acknowledgement, but then there was no additional funding added to MEMA's budget for continuing to protect our communities after the ARPA funding runs out, but also after the, you know, given the increasing need to be able to, to protect our community. And again, our immigrant community, our Latino community are basically responsible for the growth in the city population and the school enrollment. And so it's really critical. And so it's really critical to protect, um, this community. And so I just want to get a sense from, uh, the mayor's office where, where we are on this. Um, it was, you know, disheartening, uh, to know that he had only mentioned the immigrant community once in his speech and didn't mention Latinos at all in the state of, state of the city speech. But he's been really good about that. So I don't know how that happened or why, and hopefully we can have a way to make it up, make up for it. But I want to just get a sense of where we are on, on the mayor's commitment to, to protect our communities.
Thank you so much for that question. Um, so I want to start off by talking about some of the investments that we have made in the immigrant community. Um, so we've seen, uh, back in, I think it was more than a year ago, we actually invested about $4 million into the mayor's office of immigrant affairs, who, um, I think everyone knows is led by Catalina Rodriguez Lima, who is a, an amazing partner and advocate and leader, um, when it comes to supporting our immigrant communities. And so under Catalina's leadership, we, um, were able to support and establish the Baltimore New Americans Access Coalition, um, that was funded through ARPA, about $4 million going towards, um, the BNEC, as it's affectionately called, as well as, um, to language access, which I know you've been such a huge advocate about language access across city government. Well, where, where I understand we are right now with the funding for those programs is that we are, um, looking at a runway of about, you know, maybe six to eight months or so when it comes to the ARPA funding that we have available to support those programs. What this administration is committed to and what Mayor Scott is committed to is ensuring that our immigrant communities are safe. You're absolutely right. The growth that we are seeing in this city is because of, or, uh, of communities like our immigrant communities, our Latino community as well. And so we absolutely want to be a partner and a supporter, um, and an advocate for, um, all of our communities, especially our immigrant communities. And so we are, um, willing to continue working with this council to ensure that our communities are protected and they have the funding and resources that they need.
Uh, thank you. And just a follow-up, uh, I think that the request for ongoing funding, um, is about 950,000 a year for BNEC. Um, obviously we've got some runway because the ARPA funding is still there for a little while. Um, but also for the legal services is about 1.2, 1.1 million with some of it already being raised by, um, by the director. So I'm hopeful that we can get to those amounts. Um, again, I can, I can tell you stories and stories and stories of people who are, um, you know, so dedicated to our city, uh, that have been here for so long, that are facing having to go back, um, to where they came from, and yet they came here and they chose Baltimore. Um, so we have to make sure that they are, um, that they're protected. So I do hope that we can still have those conversations, and that's one thing that we want to, um, continue to do, um, by the end of the, the budget hearings. I think we want to have those discussions.
Happy to. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, my second question, um, is, uh, I have so many, so I've got to prioritize, excuse me. Um, I want to just talk a little bit about the permit office, um, and the building permit office, uh, that I think all of us have had a million bajillion emails about, um, particularly even after the launch of the relaunch, um, of the permit office. And just say what literally an abomination that it is. It is not good. Um, and the fact that it was supposed to be a redo to make things better is, um, laughable. And so, uh, I can go on and on about some specifics about what exactly the problem is, but the impact of that is huge because then we're going to have more people doing work on, on houses to rehab properties without permits so that we compromise the health and safety of our families. The impact is that then people probably won't even do business in the city, or they're going to charge a ridiculous amount of money for our residents to be able to go through the permit office. Um, so what we were trying to fix didn't get fixed. And I had asked in this room, in this hearing, uh, for a complete in-out, upside-down, forward-backward assessment of what was going on with the permit office two years ago. And it was a technology, we'll get to it, we're going to get there, we're going to launch this thing. I never saw that, um, and also I don't think it was done. And so, um, this isn't emergent, it's an urgent situation that this has to be fixed. And so I'm hoping that you can talk about, you said that you're deploying a tiger team, um, but you shouldn't have had to deploy a tiger team to begin with. Um, and so I'm hoping that we can, uh, get your commitment in terms of moving forward, but also including us because, well, you've gotten all my emails, so you know what's going on. But it's, it's bad. It's not even a little bad. It's really bad.
Thank you. That's a real, thank you so much for that question. Um, and I want to echo your sentiments, and I've heard this from other members of this body. I actually heard it from the council president and the council president's staff. Um, and they followed up with me with a memo of specific examples of some of the issues that are happening. And, um, I also, of course, receive all of your emails. And it's helpful for me to receive those emails because I can start to identify what the trends are and what some of the issues are. So I want to answer your question in two ways. I want to talk to you about what we're going to do to stabilize, um, where we are with the system in the permitting office. Then I want to talk about the future of how we implement these systems. I will say, we have not done the best job when I look at Workday, when I look at Acela. And we have a new major system implementation coming up with our, um, RSI, the new tax system and TaxSmart. Um, and, you know, I've said to you specifically when asked about, well, when are we going to get this, when is the system going to be done? And I've pulled back. I've pulled back because I want to completely overhaul how we do these system implementations. They are costly. And so what we have been doing is not the right way, um, and we need to completely modernize how we're implementing these systems. So first I'll start with Acela, and you're right, we should not have to deploy a tiger team, but here we are. Um, and so what we're going to do with our tiger team, much like they did with 311, they're, they're already in the process of going in, um, doing that process mapping, um, understanding the workflows, um, and, uh, making recommendations around changes to the workflows as well as changes to the technology. The thing, when I talked at the start about the civic design teams and I think you've heard us talk about our digital services teams, those are the teams that need to be designing these systems and working with our technology partners, right? Because they are, um, bringing a lens to the work that is a combination of technology as well as kind of operational improvements, as well as user experience. And that is the thing that is missing. Um, and so when we start to build these systems and we're, we're pulling from antiquated systems with bad data, right, uh, terrible workflows that don't work, all we're doing is taking bad systems, bad data, and putting them into something new and shiny that's just not going to work. That's generally how we have, until now, been doing these system implementations. I would have wanted Acela to go differently. Um, and so what you will see from me is with TaxSmart, the, a different approach. I cannot guarantee that there won't be hiccups with TaxSmart. Um, I will tell you that when I spoke to the state comptroller about the fact that we were using RSI and TaxSmart, she said, let me help you, because they had so many challenges at the state level. The challenge here though with TaxSmart, um, is that there are really only like two vendors that do the work, and so there are not a ton of options. But I'd rather use a vendor that the state comptroller is using so that we can make sure that our systems are talking to each other, and Baltimore County is using that vendor, and they both have lessons learned from the implementation of those systems. But it won't be the finance department and just B sit that are at the table talking to the vendor and the technology partners. It will be our civic designers and our civic design team and our digital services team. And there will be, um, a focus on the resident experience and the user experience as we are working with them to divi, to design the new system. And then there will be actual process mapping, um, so that we are using this opportunity from switch, when we switch from one system to a new system, to actually map out workflows and, you know, implement, uh, improvements to the workflows in the new systems. Obviously, there's going to be a major training component to this. You've heard all the challenges with Workday, um, and there oftentimes are te, issues with the technology, but then there are also challenges with us just educating our users who are used to using a system in a certain way, and we have to invest more, um, in training as well. But for Acela and for permitting, what is happening immediately is that we are, we're deploying that tiger team, that design team, um, that are, um, they're going to be going into DACD, um, and, um, doing the mapping and, um, looking at the system configuration to see where there are challenges with how the system is configured, if there, if the configuration doesn't match workflows, what the data issues are. We know there were a number of issues with the migration of the data. That was an issue with Workday, it was an issue with Acela, and those are fixable issues. The technology is a fixable thing, but we have to shift how we implement new systems in the city of Baltimore. And I would venture to say that before the last four or so years, we probably hadn't had a large-scale system implementation in decades. And Workday was probably the biggest system implementation that this city had done. And we did it in the best way that we knew at the time, but I think we've learned a lot, and we have an opportunity now, um, to modernize how we implement these systems and to bring on more modern systems.
So as a follow-up, uh, you know, specifically to the permit, um, piece, because we had the discussion with the, uh, director about the payment plan thing, so I'm going to put that aside for a second.
Okay.
Um, but the, for the, the, the permit office itself, um, I, we waited two years for this new system. Um, and now we're going to end up waiting two more maybe for something new? I mean, I think the situation is so urgent, especially if we want to make sure that we're rehabbing vacant properties in a proper way, um, that this has to be done pretty quickly. And I appreciated, um, Chief Wallace already making, uh, substantial changes in how the fire department is doing its job, you know, reassigning pins, um, you know, making some changes. And so those are some of the, uh, and, you know, so that he's out, he's got more people that are going to be reviewers. Um, but we need to see that those kinds of things are going to happen here, um, in order to have confidence that this is working. And frankly, I mean, this is so bad that there has to be some serious changes very quickly so that the public also knows it's not just a tiger team. It's like some serious changes that have to be done so the public knows and developer knows and our communities know that we're actually taking this seriously.
Yep. No, I, I appreciate that. Um, and I received that feedback that, um, this needs to be treated with urgency, which is why I've deployed this team. And so, um, what you have my commitment in doing is, and I think there's already, isn't it, there's already a follow-up permit hearing scheduled?
We are, uh, rescheduling for Jan, for July.
July?
Uh-huh.
Okay. That'll, um, I will work with the team and that will be a first major mi, milestone for us to provide a readout of where the tiger team's findings are. Um, and we will, um, commit to you, um, to do, you know, a regular update and readout of some of the ongoing work and the changes that we're putting in place. And then I think to your broader point is we have to restore confidence, um, back into our system, um, much like 311, right? We've been talking about 311 two, three years now. Um, and I think now we're starting to change the narrative around 311, but there is a narrative component, a communication element, um, to, um, to this work as well. And so I think there, we do need to also partner and work with you all, um, in, in, in doing that communications work as well. But what I will do is commit to July, um, at that hearing to provide a status update and what the plan of action is and the steps that we are taking to stabilize that system.
Thank you. And it's not just the technology. I think there's a lot of personnel things that have to be dealt with, whether it's capacity, right? More staff, um, reassigning staff, doing other thi, like it's a whole thing. It's a whole system. Um, so I appreciate it, Madam Chair, for your, uh, indulging me on this. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Ramos. Councilwoman Porter.
Thank you so much, Madam Chair. Um, Madam CAO, um, I want to shift the, I want to shift the conversation a little bit. Um, we, we often, and we've talked about overtime, um, on the part of agencies quite a bit during, uh, last few weeks and quite frankly, most, you know, a lot today. Um, but we don't talk about, um, how we get to the point of overtime and what governs it and what constraints we as a city government have to adhere to. Um, so can you speak to, uh, can you, can you talk about the negotiations with our unions and how that impacts the budget process? Because one of the constraints that I'm noticing, not only within this budget, but also, um, in previous years, is the constraint of workforce in bringing them in and also how that impacts the pants as well. So it's not only a people component, but it's an administratively burdened component as well, along with the processes and workflows. So can you kind of give us a, uh, give us a, 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 a understanding of that, please?
Yep, absolutely. I'll take the first part in your question first, um, in talking about the union negotiations and our ongoing conversations with our labor partners and how that impacts the budget. So right now, today, we are at the table with every single one of the city's unions. Right now, today, we're in the middle of working with you all on finalizing and adopting a budget. And so when we look at fiscal year '25, the current fiscal year that we're in, we did not actually ratify the contracts for those unions we were negotiating with. So fire and police, I think we ratified the fire and police, the fire contract. Um, one, we, one of the unions we ratified in July, the other union we ratified, um, and passed in, or was ratified and passed in October. The police, FOP, we didn't get to that until January. So I want to, uh, take a even further step back to talk about the negotiation process and how that works. So, uh, each January is when we generally, right before, um, a union agreement is about to expire, expire with our labor partners, that's when we, the labor commissioner will start talks with those union partners. Um, and during that time, we talk about, um, the non-compensation, um, items, and then we also spend time talking about and negotiating around compensation. If we cannot get to a deal with our union partners, then we go to impasse. After we go to impasse, then the next step is arbitration. It is always our goal to get agreements with our labor partners prior to having to get to arbitration. Once you get to arbitration, there are only two options. There's a third party that comes in and they either pick our option, our last, best and final, um, offer that's on the table, or they, or they pick the union's last, best and final offer that's on the table. There are a lot of reasons why we don't want to ever have to be at arbitration. It impacts the morale of the members of those unions whenever we have to get to arbitration. So we want to be able to get deals with our union partners well before getting to the stage of arbitration. Last fiscal year or the current fiscal year, um, when we were negotiating in FY24 for FY25, we were on the way, we were at impasse, we were on the way to arbitration for both fire and police. We were able to settle outside of arbitration, but where we settled at was higher than the last best and final offer, which is what we build the base budget off of, if that makes sense. And I'm happy to answer any additional questions about the labor process. So how this impacts overtime? Well, there are a couple of ways that it impacts overtime. When we built the, the budget for police and when we built the budget for fire, it's based off of what we said was the last best and final offer. That's what we budgeted for. That's why it's our last best and final offer. Um, we had to go above that in order to get a, a deal done. So that means that that amount of funding is not included in the police and fire budget, right? Because we've identified other funding sources to cover that. So that in and of itself is an issue in how you get to, um, the overages that you might see. When it comes to overtime, the cost of overtime is now higher because the wages of those workers are higher than what it was in the prior fiscal year. Also, the union contract, so each union has their own contract and their own MOUs. And in those agreements, we negotiate with those union partners the different types of overtime and how we will calculate that overtime. I'm happy to go deeper on the different types of overtime because the different types of overtime dictate the overtime calculation and also dictates the amount of money that we spend in overtime. I'm happy to do that if you all would like, or I can pause here for follow-ups.
Yeah, and I just want to, just to make it very plain language, because I think that's a, a, a point, um, it's, it's the timeline of these negotiations versus, versus the timeline of contract ratifications and when the budget is approved by the council. Okay, thank you so much. I just wanted to make sure we had a plain language, um, assessment of that. Uh, my follow-up question is, and when wages are subsequently increased as a result of negotiations, how does, uh, how and where do we find those funds to support that increase in overtime after the negotiations happen?
So what we try to do is, we, we're not gonna, we're not going to agree to, um, higher wages than what we've budgeted if we have not identified a funding source. So what we have to do in order to even put another option on the table with the union is figure out where we can cut, where we can pull from in order to, um, in order to increase those wages. In the case of the FOP in particular, we actually pulled, we looked at legal fees, um, and we are seeing, we were trending down in legal fees, and so we decided to reduce the budget for legal fees so that we could fund the higher wages, for example. But we can't put a higher offer on the table unless there is a subsequent offset.
Thank you so much, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Councilwoman Porter. Councilwoman Parker. Thank you, Councilwoman Porter. Councilwoman Parker.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Administrator Leach, thank you so much for your leadership and for being here with us today. The praise here has been extensive so far. I won't add too much to it, and very well deserved. I'll simply add that I'm grateful we have a C A O who not only functions at a high and effective level, but is able to build out a team who has that same drive to deliver results, especially in systems which make that hard and complicated. So really grateful for you and, and everybody that you have with you. Following up on Councilwoman Ramos's questions. As you know very well, migration into the city from throughout the country and around the world is one of the primary drivers of the growth in our population, our economic activity and our cultural vitality. While refugee and immigrant neighbors are creating homes for themselves and contributing to communities around the city, across all the districts of my colleagues, certainly the First District is, is in particular is home to an established and growing immigrant community and has been for generations, migrants from around the world. Since January, I've been hearing loud and clear from my neighbors, both those who are being directly attacked by the federal government's evil campaign of mass deportation, and those who are deeply concerned about the safety of their neighbors, even if they're not directly affected in their own families and households. I've also heard from the business community how this federal enforcement activity is creating anxiety and disruptions for them and for their staff and for their customers. Almost every day, our office hears about ICE targeting families' residents in the First District, and that's just one part of the city. Augusto, a grocery store employee picked up by ICE in February. ICE agents conducting wellness checks, see the Baltimore banner today, to attempt to detain sponsors, people who've gone out of their way to, to offer a home and safety here in Baltimore to their children and grandchildren and nieces and nephews. ICE harassing a grandma across the street from one of our schools because she had agreed to take her grandchildren who crossed the border seeking asylum. The attack on day laborers outside of Home Depot just last weekend, which ICE promoted like they were a bunch of commandos or something and patting themselves on the back for harassing people trying to make money to feed their families. Impact on local businesses who say employees won't come to work and people don't want to shop there because of ICE presence. I've, I've sat outside of the Fallon Building here with children and spouses crying and just in tears and, and their world torn apart because somebody had come in for a regular check-in and didn't leave, right? And visited with that same person inside the Fallon Building in detention here. All that to say, it's clear that the federal government's mass deportation mobilization is already up and running in Baltimore. This isn't a maybe someday in the future. It's every single day and has been. It's been relentless and it's growing. By the beginning of your own presentation, you mentioned of all the cuts coming to federal agencies and yet a 65% increase in homeland security. I mean, that's straight deportation in case anybody's unclear about what that money's for, is to harass our immigrant and refugee neighbors and make their lives miserable and attack them here in our city and around the country. It seems as though the response from our side, to the extent that we have the capacity to respond, certainly in our individual capacities, but in this case as a city, right? Through this budget process, is to do as much as possible to limit harm and protect our neighbors. Councilperson Ramos lifted up the importance of, and you as well, lifted up the importance of the B NAC program and that the wraparound services to support immigrant neighbors and refugee neighbors who have newly arrived. Also critically important is, is legal services, which have been funded by, under ARPA, but are critically important now as more and more of our residents get, get attacked by the federal government and, and need, need us to stand with them as they are being run through an immigration law system that is not in any way interested in the Constitution or in their legal rights or their due process. The only thing standing in that, in the way of that is legal services, and the city is in a position to help provide that, not for everybody, but for as many people as we can, right? For every, for as many families as we can protect. Would you agree that it's time for the city to make such an investment? Continue that investment with general funds moving forward in this next budget year to support those, those immigrant families?
Thank you so much for that, for that question. And what I will say is, and you know, I did, I acknowledged this in my presentation and in my remarks earlier about this administration and our support for and standing with immigrant communities. And I, and more than just me, the mayor in this administration is happy to continue conversations with the council about how we can better support our immigrant neighbors and families, especially during this very difficult time. So happy to have the conversation about where investment is needed and, and what that investment looks like.
Thank you.
Councilman Blanchard.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Briefly, I'll just say, City Administrator, I really, was really glad to hear about the, the focus on getting out and having agency leaders in the mayor's office get out and see the people and stand on the front lines where the rubber meets the road of how the city works. Old Marine Corps adage, leadership by walking around. And you, you can't lead people unless you actually get out and, and see what they're going through. So totally drinking the Kool-Aid on that one. Glad to hear that's a, a focus that you're driving home. Two questions. First one, the, been a lot of talk about the fines and fees. The, I think it's 26 and a half million is the projected total. A lot of different sources, but the top four, and it's like 75% of those estimated, that estimated revenue is coming from, I think it's, it's the landfill tipping fee, EMS transport, traffic cameras and the taxi tax. Can you, you know, this conversation about are these, you know, smart ways to raise revenue in a, in a tight budget situation? Or are they undue, you know, burdens to be putting on residents and others? Can you just talk through each of those as to why, why the administration decided that those were, were smart ways to be raising this revenue?
Thank you so much for that question. So I want to be clear. Although we outline in the budget that, that, that this, that these are things that increase revenue and by, and by just sheer definition, a fine or a fee is revenue that the city would receive if the city is able to collect it. This is not just about collecting revenue. This is not a sustainable way to raise revenue in the city of Baltimore when we think about what our revenue streams need to look like as a city. But what this is about is we have an outdated fee structure. It has been nearly, what, almost two decades since we have done a comprehensive fine and fee study. This is about modernizing our government. There are fees like that landfill tipping fee. That fee hasn't been updated since the 90s. I think we, I think it's about, we pay, or our fee is about $60 a ton or, or so. And then you go to the county and it's double that. You go to other jurisdictions and it's double that, right? It means that our fees, that, that particular fee is outdated. And I don't want to do this in a way that we are singling out one fee here and one fee there. That's the easy thing to do. I think what we need and what this body would appreciate is a comprehensive look at what our current fine and fee structure is and a comprehensive look that compares us against our peer jurisdictions here in Maryland, as well as similarly situated cities across the country so that we compare ourselves to our peers and the structures that our peers have in those jurisdictions. And so that's what this fines and fee study will do, is it will do that comparative analysis and that comparative look. I'll be able to present that, or it will go to the Board of Estimates. We can present it to this body. So you can take a comprehensive look across all of the city's fees. And the first phase of this will just be, I want to say it's D O T, the Fire Department and H C D. Those are the first phase of the fees that we're taking a closer look at. But those fees don't get updated without approval from the Board of Estimates or approval from this body. But it is about modernizing that structure. And every fee that's analyzed will not be increased. We should be very, very clear about that. That is not what we're doing here. What we are doing is modernizing what that, that structure looks like. I can spend some time talking about some of the specific fees that we've outlined. So there's the landfill tipping fee. I've already talked a bit about that landfill tipping fee. Again, that fee hasn't been updated since the 90s, which is why we wanted to put that fee on the table. But when we think about the, the, the life expectancy of the city's landfill, we know that we don't have that many years left on our landfill. Well, when we look at who's using our landfills and who's bringing in waste, right? Oftentimes, it's not our residents, right? When we look at our lar-, who participates in our large hauler program. So that means that we're bringing in waste from other jurisdictions, in part because it's cheaper. It's significantly cheaper to bring your waste into the city of Baltimore than it is to do it in Howard County or P G County. And so people use our program and they use our landfill, and that is impacting the, the useful life of our landfill. And so now we're bringing ourselves in line with where Baltimore County is and where, you know, Howard County and Hartford County is. We have one of the lowest tipping fees. We're lower than Montgomery County. Baltimore County's at 125. Howard County's at 106. Hartford County is 117. P G is 85. Montgomery's 70. Anna Rundle is 100. We are 60. We're out of line. We're out of line. And so this is a fee that we are recommending to increase, and we're putting this fee in front of this body so that we can have that conversation. But every fee that we've put in front of you actively as a part of this budget, we've done the comparative analysis. We've looked at the trend data, and we believe that these are fees that we could be modernizing. And so happy to have more of a discussion around what that looks like. On the, the EMS fee, for example, we compared ourselves when it comes to our B L S units, when it comes to our A L S units, and what we are charging for that service. And that service in particular, I, I, and Chief Wallace can correct me and/or Deputy Mayor Barxville, but this, even the Chief Wallace can correct me if I'm wrong. But I believe, and Laura, actually, you might know, less than 5% of, of, of users of that service are paying out of pocket. That service is generally paid for by Medicaid and/or insurance, right? Which is another reason why we, you know, we're comfortable putting this fee in front of you all. But when we look at B L S units, right now Baltimore City charges $700. Our Maryland peers are around $725. Our national peers are double that. They're at $1,393. When we looked at our advanced life support units, $750 in Baltimore, $800 for our Maryland peers and $1,478 for national peers, for example. So we're not doing this in a vacuum. We are using data. We're looking at the cost to actually provide the service. The cost to provide the service is now also higher. And just to be clear, by definition, we can't charge more for a service than it costs to actually provide the service. So again, I just wanted to provide a little bit more color into some of the specific fees that we've put forward and how the fee study will inform the fees that will come in front of this council and/or the Board of Estimates.
Okay. Thank you. Yeah, thank you very much for that one. The second question that I had. So I've been interested about contracting, this whole conversation around contracted positions as opposed to pins, particularly when we have a recurring core service. And Director Larson mentioned this morning that the administration worked closely with agencies to encourage them to use contractors for project-based tasks as opposed to core services. You know, there are things like water main replacements, road surfacing, sidewalk repair that might technically in some cases be project-based, but they're, they're certainly recurring core services. So can you just talk through how the administration is, I guess, kind of what's the administration's stance? And then, and what's the administration's stance? Like, what's the long-term cost of this, that whole conversation?
Yep. Thank you so much for that question. And, you know, I want to acknowledge that the council president has been very clear with us that you want to see us, you know, invest more in city services, city employees and do less contracting. And so we have heard that feedback loud and clear. And so that's why one of the cost-saving measures that we put into this budget is actually shifting work that was done by outside contractors into, into the department. So we see that with finance, on payroll, and a couple of our other agencies. But there are some of our larger agencies where we see more contractors, or we usually, we see large numbers of contractors. When we look at D P W, you look on the waste, the water and the wastewater side of, of the house. We have some pretty costly contracts that are there. And there are a number of reasons why we might have, you know, or we might be using contractors. But what I have done in working with the agencies is worked with them to put plans in place so that we are able to train our workforce so that we can lessen our dependency on these expensive contractors. What, when I talked about the implementation of the salary study separately, we actually did a salary study specifically for water and wastewater so that we could put forward higher wages for those employees as well because we could not compete with the market. We couldn't compete with private industry when it came to the need for engineers, certified engineers on the water and wastewater side. We were under and are under a consent decree. We were, we are required to have certified, certified folks in our water and wastewater division. It's a non-negotiable as a part of our consent decree. And so we did go into a contract in order to supplement and support some of our staff. But what I've encouraged the team to do and what we are doing in parallel to having those contractors onboard is we also have our staff that are not certified, that are working beside our certified staff. And we also have training programs that are active, and Director Zai can talk a little bit more about what those training programs look like. But generally, just looking at water and wastewater, to become certified, it takes about three years. And there are literacy and numeracy requirements. And so we are investing in training for our employees who have been, you know, members of the, the workforce over in our water and wastewater division, and we're helping them get certified so that they can move into those positions. The other thing that we've done is we built in off-ramps on some of those contracts. So, and, and again, I'm talking about D P W and water and wastewater in particular, where, you know, as we are certifying folks, these contracts aren't in perpetuity, right? There's an off-ramp as we start to have more, more of our folks be certified. We built an off-ramp so that we can reduce the dependence on those contractors.
Are you still going? Okay. Yeah, great info. Sounds like this is something you all put in a lot of work into. Also glad to hear this is prior to the council president. I got nothing else. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Councilman Jones.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Madam C A O, first, C A O, first I want to thank you for your enthusiasm regarding making sure our workers receive proper P P E. It's really important to make sure this healthy and safety of our workers is vital. But I will say, as you mentioned earlier, while it's important to you that we move away from this deficit mindset, it's also a culture shift and, and it's going to take time, right? Because, and I think in order to move away from that previous culture, like you said, people really have to be out on the ground, kind of watching it until that culture change happens. I know you have a lot on your plate and a lot of different things moving, but I just want to say, let's not lose sight of that, you know? And whatever we can do to, to kind of support you in, in pushing that and making that culture change happen, you know, let's make it happen because it's much needed. Because what's going to happen is the only person that hurts if it doesn't change is the workers. And they're the people we need to wrap our arms around the most because they're the ones on the front line. But to my questions, I have two questions. The first being, I'm sure you hear that there's a narrative this year around the budget that the budget is being balanced on the backs of city residents. My question is, what do you say to the residents of Baltimore about how this budget is being balanced?
Absolutely. Thank you so much for that question. I think that what we try to do here is to be responsible. And I think, and as I mentioned, we put forward what the mayor considers to be a responsibly balanced budget that also anticipates additional cuts in the headwinds that we will be facing in the weeks and months ahead. We've already, I think just days ago, and I had a whole slide about the president's skinny budget. We are anticipating some significant impacts in the city of Baltimore. We don't know the details of those impacts, but we've seen some of the, some of the programs that are on the chopping block. I don't have to tell this body, the, our human services in particular are, are greatly dependent upon grant funding from the federal government. When we look at the Baltimore City Health Department, it is a largely grant-funded organization. When we look at the mayor's Office of Homeless Services, it is a largely grant-funded organization. And so we need to be preparing ourselves for any potential reductions or cuts that might come that aren't here in this moment, which means that we might be coming back to this body, you know, with additional cuts, additional reductions or additional programs that we need to absorb mid-year, depending on what happens at the federal, at the federal level. And so although we started with an $85 million deficit, we made sure to invest in our employees. And so that's what I talked about with implementing the salary study for our lowest-wage workers. So we built that into our baseline of what we wanted to do with this budget. We still invested in our young people as a part of this budget, and we continued investments in G V R S so that we can continue to see the historic reductions in violent crime that we've been seeing in the city of Baltimore. And so again, what I would contend is that this is just the beginning. And I look forward to working in partnership with this body now to, to of course pass this budget in the weeks ahead, but also to prepare ourselves but also to prepare ourselves for what's to come.
Thank you for your answer. My second question is, when it comes to, you know, the union workers of the city, thank you for your insight on how negotiation usually goes. And, you know, just the intricacies of how you can only negotiate what you're able to find on the table. I guess would kind of lead me to my question. Have you ever started negotiations by informing the union partners what you're able to do? Because you can only, you know, negotiate what you're able to do. Just correct.
Thank you so much for that question. So I work in close partnership with our labor, with the Office of the Labor Commissioner when it comes to union negotiations. And actually, it's a partnership not just with the OLC in my office. It's also a huge partnership with BBMR. And our budget team and our finance team, they are at the table alongside HR, the OLC, and members of the mayor's office as we are doing our labor negotiations. And there is a process by which, you know, we start those labor negotiations and a process by which we negotiate with our union partners. And so we allow that process to take its course, and we will continue to do so.
If you're able to do 12%, that's the most you could do. And you put that out on the table, I'm sure they wouldn't be opposed to that. If you wanted to start negotiating with what you're able to do, I'm pretty sure they wouldn't be, wouldn't be against it. But I just want to throw that out there for my union brothers and sisters. Thank you.
I'm sure they would not. And they've been great partners to this administration.
And the last question for this round is going to be Councilman Conway.
Thank you, Madam Chair. One, I want to thank you, Madam CA, for how hard you work. I know you work incredibly hard. I know you get every email from every person. You're juggling a lot, and I see it. And I appreciate you for it. Madam Vice President, talk a little bit about the progress that we've made and some of the progress that we are still trying to make. One of the things that I've been trying to work with the administration on is creating strong systems. As we know, from mayor to mayor to mayor to mayor to mayor, a lot of those fell apart. And you've come in and been trying to put those back together. You know what question I'm going to ask? You know what it is. It's about City Stat. My favorite program, my baby of sorts. So I think, if you recall, we passed the City Stat bill in late 2023. And since then, we've been trying to put back together the program. Can you tell me where we are with the implementation of that bill?
Absolutely. So I'm happy to give an overview of where we are with the City Stat program. And our new City Stat Director, as well as our OPI Director, will be before the council in the coming days. And I know they'll go into greater detail about where we are with completely overhauling and reforming that office. And then also, I'm going to start, and then I'm going to pass it to Shamaya Kearney, the Deputy City Administrator, because performance management and OPI is directly under her. But I'll talk broadly about implementation of the bill. So I think we've made significant progress on implementation of the bill. And I'll be sure to pull up specifics of the number of, of the number of primary agency stats that we've done and the like, because we've been tracking that information. But what we've, what we've done, or what I've done really over the past year or so is, and I committed this to you as we were going through that process, is that I was going to completely overhaul City Stat. And so what we've done is we've actually completely all overhauled the OPI team. And so now the OPI team is structured where they have a civic design unit, and that's kind of the delivery arm of the organization. There's the City Stat, there's the City Stat team, and then there's like the data and analytics team as well. And what we saw was that there was a bit of a blind spot when it came in, when it came to implementing some of the insights that we garnered from City Stats. So Danny Heller, who is the director of, who's the director of the City Stat program, came from the State Comptroller's Office, where he ran the City Stat program there. What we've done is we have, we have added the non, I think it's non-primary agency stats. Yep. So we've added those non-primary agency stats. But we still also find value in the issue-based stats. So there are the constant stats of police stats. So Deputy Mayor Barxdale, every single week, there is some form of police stat. What Deputy Mayor Barxale does is bi-weekly, there's police stat. And then bi-weekly, there's admin stat. Admin stat focuses in, focuses in on the admin functions of our public safety agencies. And Deputy Mayor Barxale had been leading that work directly and is now transitioning it back to the Office of Performance and Innovation. We have overdose stat, for example. Clean stat has been a constant, a constant stat as well. But we have DOT stat, fire stat. We have the, again, just stats for those primary agencies. And that was, I think, the continuity that you challenged us on in developing this bill. And I am proud to say that we have that stood up.
So we have, how many of the nine do we have stood up? Do you have a number?
It may be in the report. Do you have the report up?
You press the button on the right. You may have to push the mic in.
So again, I'm Shamaya Kearney, serving as a Deputy City Administrator. So right now, we have stats that are stood up for, I believe, six or seven of our primary agencies. You'll also note that in addition to all of the stats, the issue-based stats that City Administrator Lees mentioned, I would note that for the first time, we issued a OPI report, which we proudly shared with the council just last month. In addition to that, you'll note in that report that there are 90 stats that this team performed in 2024. And we're looking to add additional stats this year as well. We talk about the stat process as not being something that is the only mechanism that we use to understand how agencies are performing, but to help us understand performance management at the agencies. But in addition to that, identifying where there are challenges within agencies. There was a question before about collaboration and coordination among agencies and the trigger points for that. While that does begin in the City Administrator's office, we also use the stat process as an opportunity to figure out where there are challenges with coordination and communication, to make sure that our agencies have opportunities to hear from one another where there are challenges, and then to give us an opportunity to problem solve as well. I'm so really proud of the work that the OPI team is doing, again, under the direction of Director D'Artagnan Williams, as well as Danny Heller.
I appreciate it. Thank you. And it's good to hear we're making progress there. And this is something I'm going to continue to work with you guys on. And, you know, this is one that's near and dear to me because I believe in just city services being sharp and being predictable and reliable. The second question I have, it is actually a little bit on the tail of that. One of the complaints that I hear a lot from folks is around folks not picking up the phone. And this, this has any number of problems. It can be that come from it. Permits become an issue because you call in for your permit, and you can't get someone on the phone. You leave a voicemail, they may or may not get back to you. I'll allow you to sort of speak to how we're trying to address this issue. But certainly, one of the things I want to request is an audit of some sorts by agency and division within the agency that tells us how often we're picking up the phone. I do think we've got to find a way to, to bring back this sort of culture of picking up the phone, especially because some people still work remotely here and there. And when they do, if they're not at their phone, we have to rely on them to pick up a voicemail. So if you could talk to me about what we're doing there? And can we note that for a follow-up committee request to have that audit by agency and division?
Sure. Yes. So thank you so much for that question. I actually spent some time on this question last year. And it is, it is a pet peeve of mine that people don't pick up the phone and that people don't respond to email. I think it is just the most basic thing that we can do as public servants is to answer the phone. That is what we are there for, is to be there for our residents. So there are a couple of issues with picking up, general issues that I found when digging into this issue. So I actually did call for an audit last year of the city's phone lines. I can't recall if it was by agency or if it was by phone line. But essentially, BSIT worked with, I think they worked with telecom to do an assessment and an audit of the top phone lines in the city. It did break it down by agency. It broke it down by line, and it broke it down by answer rate. So we do have the ability to track whether or not calls are being answered and what the answer rate was. And I said this last year, and I will say it again this year, that what we saw was right. And this actually came from a hearing where members of this council told me, people are not picking up the phone in DHCD in the permitting office. We did an assessment, and it was true. And so we then, in permit stat, started digging into, well, what exactly is happening where people are not picking up the phone? Is it that that line is no longer active? Do we have the wrong numbers on the internet? Like, what is the actual challenge? Well, in the case of permitting, and we are not fully there, we had, we had made significant progress. What we started to do was we actually implemented a call center or a call center model for DHCD in permitting. Permitting needs a call center, right? Just looking at the volume of calls that come in. The people that oftentimes are answering those phone lines are the same people that are actually going through and reviewing the permit. If they're on the call answering a question, that's time that they're not actually going through and reviewing permits. Same thing with fire inspections. Those are the same folks that actually have to go out and do the work. So that means that someone else needs to be taking that call, and we need to be able to triage. So what BSIT did was work with DHCD in particular. And Deputy Mayor Williams, if I'm missing anything, please jump in. We worked with, we worked with DHCD. We established a call center structure, but it was leveraging three, or excuse me, four 3-1-1 call takers that already existed. We trained those 3-1-1 call takers on just the overall permitting process and any questions that they might receive. Then we entered, we implemented queuing software. So what was happening, you were calling, and the phone was just ringing and ringing and ringing. And so we needed to operate more like a call center. So we actually need call queuing at DHCD to be able to support. So we implemented that for a number of the lines within DHCD. Then the feedback that I received, I think this was from the council president's office, or I can't remember, maybe Councilwoman Ramos, was that someone was, one of the developers was very specific about a person that was not answering the phone. So I called, and we actually checked. And, you know, the phone was not being answered. So we started looking deeper into that line. We have seen our progress slip since the implementation of Acela. We went from a 10% answer rate to a 98% answer rate. And maybe right now, it's around 70 or some odd percent. And so what I've challenged the team to do actually just last week as a part of stabilizing this is that we have got to implement the call center for all of the permitting lines that are within DHCD. So they are putting forward a proposal to me of what it would take to actually have a real call center manage the permitting office within DHCD. So hopefully, that was response to your question.
That is very helpful. And I'm glad that we took an approach for some of the lines. I think what I've also been hearing has been relevant for like the light program and other service programs that we provide to residents as well. So I think as we continue to sort of fine-tune that system and find opportunities to make sure that we're responsive to constituents and residents, I think we can still do more there. And so I would, you know, I would love to see the progress that we made since we implemented the new system. And in that audit, if we still see areas where folks are still not picking up the phone, what we can do to address those.
Well, so the audit that I have, so we can provide the current audit that I have, which is probably about a year old or a little bit older. And then I'll, we'll go through and we'll update it. The other piece of this too, this is, this goes back to cost savings. And I'm sorry, this is actually very important to your question about the fact that people work from home. So, and I think I talked about this last year too, where we just did not do a good job of implementing, when we implemented Teams and Matel, I think, is the service?
Matel, yeah.
Right, Matel. So we had a finite amount of licenses for Matel. And so you have all of these folks that were working from home, but their calls weren't being forwarded from their desk phones to their cell phones or to their computer. Like with Matel, exactly. With Matel, if you call, it should, three devices should ring. And what we realized is that most folks or a lot of folks did not have the Matel licenses, and they weren't properly set up so that all of their devices would ring no matter where they are. And so that's, you know, work with the comptroller's team to be able to get more of those Matel devices so that people had that set up. Matter of fact, I had asked the agency heads in, I mean, maybe half, if even that, of the agency heads even actually had Matel implemented. This goes back to when we bring on new technologies, we have to also shift the culture so that people actually use the technologies. So I just wanted to go a bit further on how we need to improve call answering, even when people are at home.
Yeah, that, that's super helpful. If with the response, you could provide the implementation of Matel, how many folks have set up their lines versus those that have not? And then maybe a plan to figure out how we make sure folks do set up their lines going forward.
Yep, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Colleagues, we're moving into the second round of questions. You're going to have two questions. For the second round, you're going to have one follow-up question. Two questions, one follow-up question. Please limit your comments. We have another hearing immediately following this one for our agency heads and our agency reps. Any responses that you're given, please be comprehensive and concise. We're going to start with Council President Cohen.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Do want to give a quick shout-out to D'Artagnan from OPI team, doing the work. And appreciate the back and forth we've been having around permitting. I will not belabor the point about picking up the phones, but it is well-made. I will also just note on that really quickly that I think my colleague made this point, but the Acela system clearly needs work. Want to return back to my previous line, Director Larson, and apologies on the numbers, but the question I meant to ask was about the 6.6 million for special projects in the mayor's budget. Could you let us know what that is specifically for? Out of the 44 million, there's a line item for 6.6 for special projects.
So that funds a variety of projects or ad hoc items that come up. I will say it funds a lot of items on behalf of the city council, where the city council is making direct requests to the administration throughout the fiscal year. So I could provide an accounting of those dollars from fiscal '25 because most of those dollars in fiscal '25 are going to support specific requests from individual council members.
I would appreciate just a breakdown of that entire line item because it's 6.6 million dollars. And would appreciate that. Want to go back to the conversation we've been having about vacancies and overtime. We held a committee of the whole hearing. You put out a video about it today. I know this has been a hot topic. I think it's an important one, and it is a longstanding challenge. This is not something new to this administration. But I think where the frustration on, for me and several of my colleagues, has mounted is the practice by which we have these long-term vacant pins. Money is moved into overtime. And then the council is retroactively asked to sign off on significant supplemental budgets. We did that at the beginning of this year. Begined the hearings with Director Larson, talking about this practice, and trying to get a clear commitment to figure out a different way of budgeting. Because I think it's just important that, at the end of whatever this negotiation between the council and the administration is, that we have a budget. And that, to the degree humanly possible, agencies stay within their budget. And that ultimately, the council is not asked on the back end to sign off on supplementals that have already been essentially paid out for whether it's overtime, contracting, whatever the additional expense is. And so I wanted to ask you,[1741.61] And so I wanted to ask you, uh, we had a conversation, Director Larson had a conversation in the previous hearing, but was hoping to identify a path forward so that we could change this practice and think about what would be a realistic timeline to, uh, begin to significantly lessen the need for backend retroactive supplementals.
Yep, thank you so much for that question. Um, so I think there are a couple of things, right? So as we have a conversation about overtime and a conversation about vacancies, um, we should also be thinking about, um, you know, uh, essentially what is the staffing needed to actually provide the service? So in the case of our public safety agencies or even in the case of DPW, although there might be a vacancy and it may be a vacancy that's, that we define as, uh, being a long-term vacancy because it's existed for more than 18 months, that doesn't negate the fact that that position is needed in order to provide the service. We don't want to become dependent on overtime. Um, we know that when it comes to our public safety agencies and even our operational agencies, there are industry standards that we need to be adhering to. And what I want to be able to avoid, I actually pulled up some of the data from solid waste and I looked at the trends in, um, the number of budgeted FTEs in, you know, some parts of our solid waste division and what it looked like all, going all the way back to FY17, FY18 and where we are right now. And what, what you actually saw, and this happened during the pandemic year, right? And so these are some of the decisions that, you know, are coming back and impacting us, is during the pandemic year, we started to see reductions in the number of budgeted FTEs. And of course, we were in crisis mode. We were in the middle of a crisis. We had a significant budget cap. ARPA didn't exist at the time. I don't even know that we had CARESAC dollars and cities across the country were grappling with how they close these huge budget deficits. And so we started reducing positions, right? And so then what, what happens is now we're building our current service level off of, you know, re- uh, uh, reduced workforce. And so when you get into issues like the, you know, stabilization of solid waste and being able to provide, you know, uh, risk trash and recycling, well, you're not staffed appropriately to provide, uh, trash and recycling services. And so what we've done over the past few budgets is we've invested back into, um, you know, uh, adding additional FTEs within the Department of Public Works, including in this year's budget, so that we are able to be appropriately staffed to provide that service. Same thing happens on the, on the side of BPD as well as fire. Just because there's a vacancy does not mean that that, that position isn't needed. The position is needed. When it comes to our strength and force numbers, it's 2,600, right? Although we're at 2,000, a little over 2,000, we dipped below, um, 2,000 and we're now net 40, um, officers, I think, for the first time in several years, um, because those, those, again, those positions are needed. So I want to make sure that I'm actually answering the direct question, um, that you asked me, which is how do we reduce our reliance on overtime, work with the council to limit, to limit the supplementals that come before you all? That, that's essentially the question that you're asking me. I am happy to, um, work with the council and specifically you, Mr. Council President, on what that process looks like. The supplemental process, uh, occurs because we have to end the year in balance, right? And so that's why we do these supplementals, but I absolutely hear the feedback from this body about the changes that you want to see and how we do that process. We provide you quarterly updates. Um, we can talk about how we shift or strengthen the quarterly updates that we provide to this body, but again, I'm happy to, to work with you all to improve this area.
Understood. And I want to be crystal clear that there is never going to be a moment where I am going to suggest, or I think any of my colleagues will suggest, that we curtail or reduce service allocation to our residents. That is of the utmost importance. That is why folks choose to live here, pay taxes, et cetera. I think more the challenge that I struggle with is the practice by which I am asked as the presiding officer of the legislative body of city government to sign off on a budget, knowing that there will be additional supplementals, expenses occur, knowing that, uh, as the budget chair and I engage and talk about what we want to see in this budget, that there are going to be a series of overspends within agencies. Um, what I am looking for is a commitment that we will, and, and I think I heard it in your response, but that we will work collaboratively to address what I consider to be a really fatal flaw in the process by which we are budgeting in the city of Baltimore. And I want to be clear, I also fully appreciate everything you said about the pandemic, about ARPA, about sort of money coming in from the feds and then disappear, right? I mean, it creates challenges. Um, again, I would argue this specific challenge precedes this administration. So it is not just a, uh, Mayor Scott, city administrator leech issue. I think it's been going on since before you all were here, uh, but understand how the pandemic contributed to it and I believe it needs to change. And so looking for that path forward.
Yeah, absolutely. And so, um, you know, I want to be clear as well that I own the challenge, right? Um, I hear directly from this body, heard directly from this body. And what, um, what I will commit to is that we will work together and we will, um, we will work together and, and identify a path forward to reduce some of the issues that we're seeing. I want to talk about what that path forward looks like. And I think Director Larson talked a little bit about it this morning. So we've talked a lot about system implementations and the challenges that have occurred. Well, the, the beauty of, um, implementing new and modern technology and systems is that there's an opportunity to maximize those systems to be able to better support city operations. We are under utilizing Workday. There are things that we can do and things that Director Larson and her team have already done in Workday where we add additional checks and balances within Workday so we can capture these things before they become significant cost overruns. We heard about some of the challenges even with Workday on the procurement side where there was a logjam in procurement. We broke through the logjam in procurement and then now all these procurements are coming in at the same time. Another example is, this is now going to be on the fleet side. We did a lot of fleet modernization. We ordered 80 load packers, we ordered street sweepers, we ordered fire engines and they're all coming in at the same time. And so that's why you're now seeing these upfitting costs that are pretty significant because you got all these vehicles that are coming into the city fleet at the same time. So there are all of these things that are contributing factors. That does not change the fact that you're right, that we should have a more modernized system to be able to catch these things and to have checks and balances throughout the organization. Um, and so I'm happy to work with you on what those checks and balances look like. As a part of the Workday Tiger Team, we will be working, um, to, with BBMR, HR, procurement and all of our other partners to look at business flows and add in those additional checks and balances so that we will limit the number of, um, of, of sub- of subsequent supplementals that come to this body.
Thank you, Madam, uh, City Administrator. Just as a follow-up request, data request, uh, would like to engage you, the budget chair and, uh, chief of staff in that conversation before, uh, these hearings conclude.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
We're going to move to Councilwoman Schleifer. Um, City Administrator and your team, you have 90 seconds for your response. Thank you.
Uh, you were talking before about comparing us to peer jurisdictions as it pertains to, uh, these new fees, uh, but, you know, something that came up in the previous hearing and should, needs to be said today also is, first of all, the, our neighboring jurisdictions, their tax rate is half the rate of our tax rate. And so when you look at the full picture of what people are spending to live here and to improve their properties here or to conduct business here, overall, it's, it's higher. Um, and so my first question is, will these, these proposed tax and fee increases affect in any way our bond rating?
Thank you for that question. I do want to clarify, there are no new taxes in this budget. So there are no, we did not increase taxes in this budget. Um, but, um, I will start and then I will defer to Director Larson. So we go through a process, and I think we talked about this earlier in the hearing, where we go through a process with our rating agencies where they look at a number of factors that contribute to the city's bond rating. Um, I do not believe that us modernizing the way, um, that we structure our fund and fee systems will reflect negatively on the city's bond rating. But I'll turn it over to Director Larson so she can, um, add any additional color that I might have missed.
Uh, Councilman, I, I cannot think of a, of how the bond rating agency would, would point to that as a, a specific, um, hurt to the city's bond rating. If anything, I think it may help, um, because it would be, uh, evidence in terms of how the city is focusing on revenue diversification so that we're not overly reliant on any one, uh, revenue stream. And it would also, um, demonstrate the city's, um, the city's efforts to, uh, ensure that those structures are in line, uh, with, uh, current organizational structures, i.e. the, that they are aligned to the current cost of providing the services associated with the fees.
I think, um, my one follow-up to that is, you know, the residents of Baltimore don't really care what it's called, whether it's a tax or a fee. If you're charging them more money, it's, you know, it's a tax. I mean, Merriam-Webster says a charge, a tax is a charge usually of money imposed by legislative or other public authority upon persons or property for public purposes. And so, you know, call it what you want. At the end of the day, people are strapped right now with, you know, they're raising utility costs and they just can't make ends meet. And so any additional costs on them from the government, from us, is just something that many people can't, can, uh, weather. Uh, my second question, uh, is the Board of Elections, it's my understanding that state law says that the facilities and the warehouses need to be in the same building. I know that the Board of Elections has come to the council for years. Um, the, the previous director just passed, um, he had been long advocating for this, uh, to have the, their warehouse and their offices in the same building. I was just, I was a little curious, I was looking through the budget and I didn't see it in there. Is it in the budget? And if it's not, why is that not in this year's budget?
Madam Chair, before we, before we answer that, may I speak briefly? I just want to-
You have the floor.
For the consideration of the committee and the council, I want to be sure that we control this narrative, that this budget at all increases fees. I want to remind everybody that when we talk about, excuse me, increases taxes, there are no new taxes in this budget. I want to remind everybody that Maryland courts restrict this government from our ability to raise taxes to only for revenue purposes. When we raise a fee, we can only raise a fee up to the cost to produce the service. So when we talk about raising fees, it is not a tax. And when we say that it is a tax, we're purposefully confusing the residents. The administration does not want to purposely confuse the residents, but to make sure that everyone knows exactly what's happening in good government. Thank you.
Well, you know, I, I requested in the previous hearing and they deferred to you, Madam CAO, on the list of what these, uh, fee increases can be, we were told that it can be hundreds of them. Uh, and so, you know, I requested, uh, in writing last week, uh, to get a list of what those possible, uh, increases are. Um, and I've yet to receive that. And so I was hoping that maybe we can get a timeline on when to receive that. But, but like I just said, um, you know, these, these fees and that, that continuously increase, whether it be, you know, on the utility side with the water bills, 9% year-over-year increases and some of these other things, we are the highest, um, tax jurisdiction, um, of our surrounding jurisdictions by, by double. I mean, Baltimore County that hugs us, their tax rate, property tax rate is half the rate. Um, and so all of these things do come into play on how much it costs to do business here. So when, when can we get a list of these proposals? Because I know in the slide that you had about the, the increases such as the ambulance rides and some of these other things, we, um, we didn't get a comprehensive list. So when can we get that list? Because, you know, when we talk about that it can't exceed the cost of what it is, I mean, a lot of these agencies are not providing these services in an effective and efficient manner. And so when you're figuring out costs, the cost that we're charging or the cost that it's costing us could be significantly higher than what it actually should cost. Um, so I was just curious when we can get that comprehensive list.
Thank you. So the, we are in the midst of the fee study, um, right now. And so, um, we e- expect that the fee study will be done this summer. When the fee study is done, it will be presented to the board of estimates and a copy of the fee study along with a comprehensive list of every fee that was reviewed will be provided to the council. Um, as I mentioned, we're doing it in a phased approach. There will not be a time where the city of Baltimore and our residents will see hundreds of increases at a time. Um, what this study will do is it will lay out the facts using data. It will lay out all of the fees that are in the Department of Housing and Community Development, the fees that are within FIRE, as well as the fees that are within, what's the other agency? FIRE, DHCD, DOT. The other agency is DOT. So it will list all of those fees. It will do a comparison against our Maryland partners as well as our national partners. And then from that, the mayor will then put forward a recommendation. There will be a recommendation that's in the study, but then the mayor will go a step further and he will analyze the recommendations from that study and he will send recommendations to the board of estimates and/or the, or, and/or the city council based on the authority for raising that said fee. So you will get that this summer.
When can we get the list of the items that you're studying?
This summer.
Of the items that you're, we can't know what items are being studied?
So it's every fee in the Department of Transportation, the Department of Housing and Community Development and the Department of Transportation.
So can we get a list of what those fees are?
All of those fees will be provided as a part of the comprehensive fee study, which will be released this summer.
Okay, can we, um, can I get an answer to my other question before we were just interrupted about the Board of Elections being housed in the, um, the warehouse and offices being housed in the same location?
Yes. So thank you so much for that question and Laura will have to help me out with this one. So the lease costs for the department or the Board of Elections are included in this budget. Um, we are actively working with the Board of Elections and we're actively working with them last year to identify locations. And Justin, you also might have feedback on this one. But we were working with the comptrollers office and the real estate team to identify a space that met their needs. We had not yet identified a space that met their needs and was within budget. So right now, what is built into their budget are the costs to, um, I think the cost to maintain their lease. I don't think we added additional lease cost, did we?
Yeah, that, that's correct. We had had, we had, in the fiscal 25 budget, there was funding for a potential new location. Uh, identifying that new location had stalled out, uh, and so, and it did not appear that they would identify a new lease, uh, in time to be moved in, in fiscal 26. So we took, um, we took, we removed the money from the new location that was part of the 26 budget, uh, and instructed the Board of Elections to continue to work with the comptrollers real estate team to identify a facility that met their needs. And once they could identify a facility that met their needs, then we would work with them to restore funding in the budget.
So the location they found, how much over budget was that location?
Uh, I, I can't, I can't recall off the top of my head.
So can that be provided to the committee?
Um, yes, I can go back through my records. I, I just want to state that, uh, there were many, many iterations of a, a potential deal. The financial component was one, but there were another, a number of additional components regarding the potential facility that were also, that also made it challenging to, to finalize the deal.
Thank you.
Vice President Middleton.
Thank you. Question, one question, one comment. Question, um, the deputy mayor for operations, it, can you just quickly do the hiring process?
Yes, ab- absolutely. So, um, I'm looking forward to bringing on a deputy mayor of operations that will oversee DOT, the Department of Public Works, the mayor's office of infrastructure development, um, and kind of those core operational business units. This, what, what we see in the FY26 budget is that we are reclassifying, reallocating a position because we did not have a deputy mayor of operations position after the budget passes. I look forward to hiring, uh, new deputy mayor of operations. So that will be sometime this summer. I anticipate July, August.
Thank you. And then my comment, I've been kind of holding back, but respectfully, um, as far as the questions on the residency requirement and the acting positions, um, I just have to make this comment and then you can respond. So, um, you know, there's a trend around the country of just, um, leadership roles in government, period, that have been, uh, you know, hard to fill. And we do have, in Baltimore, you know, we have people that basically, um, you know, started positions out of high school and worked their way up 20, 30 years and are very dedicated. And, um, agencies like Department of Transportation, Public Works, General Services, a lot of turnover. And there have been people that have been dedicated and holding up the fort, kind of. And, um, we, a bill was put in a little while back about a residency requirement. Well, it does take time to really implement that because, and part of it is because of the turnover. Um, and it's going to take grandfathering in people. So all that to say, I respect that you understand, um, keeping people that have wisdom, longevity and consistency in, in holding up that fort. And we shouldn't, um, I don't feel we should be looking at this acting position. Um, we should be looking at what the job is and how well they're doing that work. Even here on the council, we have pins and things like that that have a certain title that have been that title for 20, 30, 40, 50 years, but the whole job spec is completely different. And this is kind of the, a similar thing that you're going through with your agency. So I want to commend you for that. And as a- And as a council, we have to be careful of how we help to make changes and not just question people's positions. Your comment?
Yes, thank you so much for that, and I'll be very quick. I would actually contend that some of the operational challenges that we face are because of a lack of institutional knowledge and turnover, right? There were people who did the job, and they did it a certain way, and they've transitioned to other organizations, and that has left significant gaps, which, you know, we need to do more work around ensuring that there are multiple layers of staff that know how to do, you know, each other's jobs, that we're doing more cross-training so that we're able to keep that institutional knowledge. But to your broader point, there are folks that have worked for this city, you know, I mean, Mr. Comagies, right? Over 50 years he's worked for the city of Baltimore. There are so many employees in the Department of Public Works, I was at their celebration recently, 30, 40, 50 years. And so I want to make sure that we're always valuing and lifting up those employees and making sure that we're providing them opportunities for promotion when they become available.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you both. Councilmember Gray.
Thank you. We talk generally about overtime and its impact on our bottom line. I want to understand the nuances of overtime specifically for our public safety agencies since they are the largest drivers of our overtime costs. Can you talk a little bit about the different types of overtime when it comes to these public safety agencies?
Yes, absolutely. I mentioned a little bit earlier how our union contracts dictate the number, or different, dictate the parameters around overtime. Some of the contracts actually build in a maximum amount of overtime. So I believe in FOP, there are, there's a maximum amount of overtime that someone can generate in a week. I want to say it's like 32 hours. Deputy Mayor Barksdale will help me if that's not accurate. But in general, there, the way I would categorize or break out the different types of overtime is you're going to have volunteer overtime or just general overtime. That's overtime where you're being paid time and a half in order to work. Then we have callback overtime. So callback overtime is, I've left, I've gone for the day, I'm at home, I'm called back into work. So when you're called back into work, whether you're a T E O or, you know, you're a, you know, a police officer, right? Not only are you going to be getting time and a half, you would also get an additional four hours. You're guaranteed four hours. So let's say you come back in, you only work an hour, you're still guaranteed four hours if you are called back. So of course, callback overtime is different from just the general overtime. And then there are also some nuances when it comes to police, and I'm not going to go into a lot of details. When Commissioner Worley comes before you all, he can kind of talk through some of the nuances when it comes to police overtime, as well as Chief Wallace when it comes to fire overtime. But for example, there are these things called H days. So there are H days and there are commissioner days. Commissioner days, the commissioner gets to set five days a year that he can mandate that everyone works. Generally, that's the Fourth of July, Memorial Day kind of major holidays. Then there are H days, which are the days where officers are scheduled off. If you are asked to come in and if your H day is canceled, there are penalties associated with the cancellation of your H day, for example. So when, there's a lot of nuance when it comes to overtime, and a lot of that nuance is dictated by the different union contracts.
Yeah, thank you. And just a very quick 90 seconds, let's follow up on that. How much overtime, I guess, can a police officer work or a fire officer work? And I don't know if Deputy Mayor Barksdale, if you're able to answer, because this may be a good question to you, but also, how do you guys monitor the overtime for our public safety agencies to ensure accountability? And what needs to happen to get overtime under control within our public safety agencies?
Yes, sir, Councilman. The big thing that we do is admin stat. I mean, we can do fine with reductions and homicides, non-fatal shootings and everything, but we still have a responsibility to manage that money correctly, no matter how well we're doing. So with the blessing of the mayor, city administrator, we started admin stat, and that was July 16th of 2024. So when the agencies come in, the police commissioner and his admin team come in, we put the numbers up on the board, the data. Who are the high earners? How are they making this money? Why are they making this money? At that time, they can tell us reasoning, as the city administrator was speaking about, the H day. Sir, I asked the commissioner, give me one quick example that everybody could understand. So pretend, sir, you're an officer, maybe 10 years on, you make $441 a day, right? For your shift. Your day gets canceled. That $441 now becomes $1,311. This is why you need the supervision in this, to look at it, the management in this, to look at it, and City Hall has to look at everything. So that's the big thing that we can do to help address this overtime issue. And there are many routes to overtime. Sir, you could get a last-minute in-progress call. You better go. You could wind up with an accident where you're waiting for a tow truck. One of the worst is if you catch an act of violence and you're a primary officer. You've got to stay because that case is active. So as the city administrator said, a lot of nuances to it, but I believe Commissioner Worley could really give you a better deep dive than I can, sir.
Thank you for that. That seems really, just, I don't know, a little outlandish that you miss a day and you get paid triple than two or three times their amount.
It's...
You don't even have to follow up on that. And my final question, and I don't have a follow-up. Residents heavily rely on 3-1-1 to communicate issues in their communities. This is almost like a follow-up to what I asked earlier. These requests serve as an eye and ear of our community and some of these chronic issues that they face regularly. I'm glad to hear that there's modifications to the feedback with if it's closed, it's actually closed. And I've used it where it actually sends it to, it'll say this is the new number that you're being assigned for, you know, said issue. I guess, can you talk a little about how those inter-agency and multi-agency responses are needed? And can you talk about the improvements that have been made? And any feedback or impact that has been identified as a result of these changes? When I talk about multi-agency, it's like the illegal dumping.
I have a good one that I think you'll like. So one, I'll talk about what we've improved as far as the communication within 3-1-1. So now what you see in 3-1-1 are the different steps in the process. Before, it would be ticket opened, in-progress closed, right? So now what we've done is we've actually broken down the steps within 3-1-1, so you can follow along in the journey of where that issue is in progress of being addressed and fixed. So one of the improvements that has come out of 3-1-1 Reimagine and the 3-1-1 Tiger Team is one that I think you will, that's near and dear to your heart, which is illegal dumping. And it's been one that has been top of mind for me as well. The way that illegal dumping worked in 3-1-1, it just, it didn't work in 3-1-1. Essentially, what was happening is that when someone would put in an illegal dumping request, and I've done this, that that request would go to D H C D. D H C D would investigate it. Their S L A for investigation, I forget, team is maybe 15 or so days, right? So they'd take whatever time to do the investigation. They would close it out. Oftentimes, it would get closed in the system instead of being transferred to DPW so that DPW could actually do the cleanup. And so residents were saying, hey, the mattress is still there, why is this closed? Well, it was closed because the investigation was done. And then it might be, we might not consider it illegal dumping, we might refer that to street and alley or some other service, so it's no longer considered an illegal dumping request. So very quickly, what we have done, and you and I have talked about a broader pilot, but we've implemented an initial change, and you can ask, talk more about this with O P I. But now we're looking at the number of requests, illegal dumping requests that are closed and that are then sent over to street and alley. And so what we've put in are parameters around what needs to go to investigation. Everything doesn't need an investigation. Some things need to go straight to cleanup, and so we've actually changed our workflows so that there are more things that are actually going to cleanup. And I think we've reduced the number of investigations by like 60 or 70%, but O P I can tell you more. But we've now categorized it so that the cleanup happens faster for certain nuisance type of activities. If it's a mattress, we can't investigate a mattress, right? Like unless there is a camera that is showing who dumped that mattress. Now, if it is, you know, some other type of paperwork or something bigger, then we can do an investigation, and it should require investigation, but some things should go directly to cleanup. That was a direct result of 3-1-1 Reimagine.
Yes, and I literally just got an email this morning with a community group, CC'd me on an email saying they put one in this morning and it was picked up today. So thank you and thank God, so.
That never happens.
I know, that's why.
Not for illegal dumping.
And it must have been something that was there before, so I'll take all the credit, though. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Ramos.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you again, Madam CAO. I wanted to ask two kind of broader questions. On page 91 of the executive summary are the pillars, and then also the goals and the indicators on each, on each one. And this hasn't changed since the beginning of the mayor's first term. And actually, nowhere in this page doesn't say anything about vacant properties. Nowhere on this page does it say anything about, you know, a bunch of other priorities that the mayor has had since the beginning of his first term. And so I was wondering, is this going to be changed? What is, I mean, it still mentions, it still mentions COVID. Obviously, we still have some COVID things to deal with. It certainly still has its priorities on public safety, et cetera. But, you know, after, I would have thought that with a new term, there would have been some...
Updates.
...revisions here. And so I wanted to see, and this is, this is the current executive summary, so I don't know if you're going to go through a process of dealing, of doing this?
So thank you so much for that question. And I spoke a little bit to this in my, in my presentation earlier. So as you all will recall, the mayor released an action plan, and in the action plan, it outlined what the five pillars for the mayor's administration will be. We are still operating under, under those five pillars, and I imagine that most of those pillars will continue into the second term. They already are continuing into the second term. But to your broader question about what the second term looks like as far as goal setting, so, and I'll allow Director Kearney to spend a little bit more time with this, but this is actually why I recruited Director Kearney, who is a performance, as well as audit expert, to come and help us build out what the strategic vision and strategic plan will look like for the mayor's second term. And within that strategic plan, strategic vision that we outline, we will go through a process where we're going to update our goals, we're going to update our strategic initiatives. We're already going through a process where we're adding more rigor to our key performance indicators, so that I do anticipate that, you know, by next year's budget, you will see some updates. But Director Kearney, anything I may have missed?
So to CAO Leach's point, we are very focused on strategic planning and how we better align our performance metrics and our agency performance with a strategic plan. Strategic planning is essentially very important because it provides direction and focus, it improves our decision-making, and it also enhances organizational alignment. So we'll be spending some time this summer working with our executives on performance management, talking about our strategic plan, enlisting the assistance of multiple partners, which includes some of the partners that you've already heard us talk about before, like Bloomberg Philanthropies, the Harvard School of Government, with whom we've been in contact with, and has already provided some essential assistance to us in the strategic planning and performance management space. So we'll continue to build on that this summer, and we'll be sharing information with you and the next time we come before you. Thank you.
And hopefully, we'll be included in that, too, because we are certainly a part of that, of vision for our city. So I appreciate that, thank you, because I noticed it was a glaring, you know, but knowing that we're doing that update will be helpful. My second question is about the city's 10-year plan, which I'm, I think, is super important because we want to look at how we're going to be financially stable moving forward and looking at various pieces of what we can be doing. And I'm grateful to have gotten a little bit of a heads-up on it, on the tax credit working group, which I appreciate being able to participate in. And so I was looking at your slide that you have here. It's slightly different than what the mayor's letter says in the, I guess it's in the executive summary, in terms of the sort of order of how this is all going to go. There's, on your slide, it says tax competitiveness, core city services, and infrastructure. And in the mayor's letter, it says core services, infrastructure, and tax relief. I think that order of how those go are important because it shows the priorities in terms of what we're thinking about. Specifically, I brought this up during the briefing, that I believe very strongly that addressing our vacant property issues has to be a core tenet of the 10-year plan because it's, you know, as we are reducing vacant properties, we're increasing the number of housing units, and we're building that investment and increasing our tax base. And I think that's a really, and also saving money, the $200 million that we spend on vacant, or the $100 million we spend on vacant properties now then ends up going away. So can you talk a little bit more about the 10-year plan? And, you know, I believe it is, the vacant property piece is integrated, but it was kind of last, so I'm kind of trying to make sure that it, well, it's not listed here at all, that those kinds of priorities are taken into consideration in the 10-year plan.
Yeah, absolutely. So, and of course, I know that this body is aware of the mayor's vacant housing initiative that we've now dubbed or called Reframe Baltimore, as well as the Baltimore Vacants Reinvestment Council. And so, and Councilwoman Ramos, who has been so deeply and passionately engaged on this issue, you know that this is a top priority for Mayor Scott. In fact, you know, that is why we put forward this bold, aggressive vision, and really we're thinking outside of the box around how we can actually eliminate and fund the elimination of vacant properties across the city in the next 15 years. And so that will definitely be connected to and reflected in the city's 10-year financial plan, although it may not be called out. You know that there's a ton of work that is happening in that space, and so I do want to acknowledge that there is a separate plan, which is the vacant housing plan, as well as the housing plan as well, that D H C D, I think it's still in draft form, but that D H C D put forward as well. So their housing is absolutely a top priority for this administration.
Thank you. I just, you know, want to make sure that it's still, because there's all the plans, and then they're sort of bringing all the plans into one place, which I think is what you're trying to strive for here when we're thinking about the strategic plan for the operations of the city, but also the 10-year plan. So I think it does have to be emphasized. Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Our last question and a follow-up.
So just, just because it was, there was a lot of back and forth on this, just want to set the record straight regarding the residency requirement piece. I fully agree with you, Madam CAO, I'll repeat that, I fully agree with you, Madam CAO, about the residency where the most qualified person, and we should be promoting from within as often as possible. And so just for the record, because I think there was some confusion up here, I don't think we should have that residency requirement. And I said that to my colleague who sponsored, I think it was two terms ago when we did that. I thought it wasn't going to work, and I'm more sure now than ever before that it's not working and that it's just not, not the best for Baltimore. But my, my last question is as follows. This is for the chief of staff. You were just saying how it's important that, you know, the narrative and facts and everything is correct. I just pulled up the new revenue proposal slide that we have, and there are six items on it, and two of them, so 33% of, of all the proposals here are an increase in taxes. So are those now off the table, or are they still on the table?
You have to share with me what you're looking at for me to be able to comment on it.
Sure. So it's the, it's the slide that we saw about new revenue proposals, where it listed off the six items, which is why I've requested the detailed description of all the things, just to understand the full picture. But the two items here that it talks about is an increase in the taxi tax, as well as changing the split of the grocery bag tax. So those are part of the new revenue proposals to get us to this close to $30 million of increase in taxes and fees. So are those still being proposed, or are they off the table? So are those still being proposed or are they off the table?
I, I can address that. Thank you so much. So, um, so, uh, what you just described with the grocery bag tax, it's, again, it's just redistributing it. So, um, and, uh, Laura, you might have to help me out on the current distribution. We're moving to a model of 50/50. The tax itself isn't increasing, it's just how much tax, uh, how much of the tax that already exists the city keeps is, is changing. So I forget, it may have been like 60, 40 or some odd, but we're moving to a 50/50 split, which surrounding jurisdictions have a similar 50/50 split. So the tax itself is not going up, it's just being redistributed.
Correct. The, correct. Under the proposal, the, the tax would stay at five cents a bag. Currently it gets split four cents to the business, one cent to the city. We're proposing to change the split to 50/50.
Right. So that's a huge tax differential to our grocery stores that they are, instead of having a four cent to one cent split, are now being split 50/50. That is a, a tremendous tax increase to our grocers.
It's, so just to be clear, it's not a tax increase. The tax is five cent, that doesn't change. It's the redistribute, we just redistribute how the revenue generated from the tax is distributed. Instead of us walking away with one percent, with one cent, we now get to walk away with two and a half percent or cent.
Right. So the grocery stores are now giving, are, are being taxed differently because now that the split is not going to be the same. And so their revenue, they're going to, they're going to ultimately pass that on to consumers. That's just how this works. And so, um, that is an increase. Uh, can we talk about the taxi tax increase?
Sure.
So is that being increased or is that off the table since, uh, Chief of Staff said we're not raising any taxes?
Yep. So the, um, the taxi tab increase and, uh, again, Laura, I might need your help with this one, with the taxi tax, uh, taxi cab increase, that is being levied to the, uh, the taxi cab companies. Um, so that is on them. That isn't necessarily a, a tax on the, um, on residents. And I think the conversation earlier was about balancing or increasing taxes for the residents of the city of Baltimore, which we have not increased resident taxes on the residents of the city of Baltimore. What we have put forward, um, is, uh, a fine and fee increase and increases to certain fees.
Right. So these fees and tax increases are impacting the residents of Baltimore. If you raise the taxi tax, the people who are going to pay for that are going to be the people who don't have cars and are using taxis to get to work, to get the childcare. The, the taxi companies are not just going to absorb the, this increase in tax, they never do. When you, when you change a split with the grocery stores or you raise taxes or fees on anything, it, it gets absorbed. When you raise, if you raise permitting fees on the contractors, the contractors aren't going to say, oh, I'm going to make $2,000 less on this home improvement. No, they pass that on to the residents. So the residents are the ones who are paying for this.
Yep. So, um, thank you for, um, and thank you for that, and I take your point. So specifically when it comes to that taxi tax, uh, the taxi cab fee, we haven't increased or even looked at the taxi cab, uh, fee since 2013, right? And this is generally for those ride-share companies, um, that, that provide services in the city of Baltimore. When we look at our ride-share fees as in relation to surrounding jurisdictions, again, we are outpaced, we are outsized. Same thing with the distribution of the, um, of the grocery bag tax. That's why we even put it forward is because we looked at everyone else who is keeping more of the revenue. We're actually going to a 50/50 split where you have some jurisdictions that are at, you know, 75, 25, right? But before, the way that we had the structure set up, it wasn't advantageous to the city of Baltimore. And so we're doing a restructure or redistribution.
Right, but it's not proportionate because Baltimore County has a small business exemption, so there's no bag tax for grocers that have three or less locations. So it does not impact a lot of, you know, the smaller locations that are typically found in food deserts. Uh, so I just wanted to just set the record, uh, clear, uh, you know, I appreciate you acknowledging that, that there are, there are plenty of fees and tax increases. And I'm not saying it's not justified, I don't know, because without looking at those, those, the list and what we're talking about, it's hard to have that conversation, which is why I thought it's very important for the committee to have that information prior to voting on this budget so that we know what are these possible increases and what that looks like and which items are we talking about? Because if you ask me when it comes to permitting, I think it's important that we get that system down pat and we're actually delivering that service and those goods at the, at the, in a reasonable amount of time, like many of our other surrounding jurisdictions are before we go and say, well, now you should pay the same amount.
Yes. So, uh, that, thank you so much for that. And again, I think that's why it's important, um, to acknowledge the process that we'll go through before there are any additional, or that, before there are any increases. Those increases that were recommendations that the mayor put forward, he will put them forward to this body and he will put them forward to, before the Board of Estimates. And we will be able to have a robust dialogue about, um, which things we want to move forward with as a city. And so I look forward to having that dialogue and conversation with you and the members of this body.
Thank you.
Yeah, and I, I'd like to just add, when you get, when you look at the comment that I made, one of the things that the council and many council members have said is that we have to have honesty in budgeting. So when we talk about that, I want to make sure that we're not putting out soundbites that, that an average resident, when they watch TV or when they read the news, with that, that soundbite tells them that they are going to have a, a broad-based tax increase. For most residents, that, they're not going to see the taxes or, or the quote-unquote fees that we're talking about. Well, so that's, I think, what is important for us as an administration to make sure is being said, is that these broad-based fees, that that is not confused with the, with the, the increases to these longstanding fees that have not been increased in a long time.
Yeah, so I'm, I'm not concerned with, with the narrative, I'm concerned with the facts. And the facts are, you said there was zero taxes to be increased this year. I just showed you that's not correct. Uh, you say these fees are not going to affect the residents of Baltimore. I say we can't have that conversation until we see what these lists of fees are. And the fact of the matter is, when you look at the ones we are already aware of, such as, you know, the ambulance transport fees and some of these other fees, that is absolutely going to hit the people who are, are, you know, impacted the most. Our seniors utilize the 911 system for EMS probably more than any other, uh, group in the city, and therefore they are going to be hit by that. The fire department has testified to us in this council chambers that a lot of that money goes uncollected, uh, and so we know that it's not just people who have insurance and not just people on Medicare. Um, and so I just think that, you know, our seniors who aren't fixing comes, who are facing water bills they can't afford, who are facing BGE bills they can't afford, are going to be impacted by this. And people who are going to the grocery store, they are going to be impacted by this because the grocery, grocers are not going to just say, sure, Baltimore City, take, you know, a, a, a larger portion of this, of this grocery bag tax, we'll just absorb it. That's not going to happen. The margins on groceries is so small, they're going to pass it on to them. And, and the taxi thing, that's a direct thing that they 100%, I guarantee you, will pass on directly to it, they will add it to the line item and it will say Baltimore City Tax. That's what they already do and they will increase the, the number proportionately.
Thank you, Councilman Slifer, for closing us out. We are going to reset before we start our next hearing in a few minutes.